We'll start with the invocation led by Vice Mayor Smith, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Thomas. Please rise as you're able.
Tonight, we gather to serve our neighbors, both known and unknown. We celebrate the victories of good, equitable progress, and we lift up those who are struggling. We pray for families at risk due to war, oppression, and injustice, both here in Knoxville and across the world. Allow us to make good decisions and deliberate in a way that is helpful and loving to our neighbors. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugit.
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker.
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
And Councilwoman Thomas. All members present, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on the minutes of the May 13 legislative budget hearing and public hearing?
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion on the minutes of the May 27 regular meeting?
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Parker?
I'm noticing a new format now for our minutes, and I'm much appreciative to have that detail included, so happy to see it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion on the minutes of the May 29 workshop? Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items to be withdrawn from tonight's agenda? Are there any items to be postponed from tonight's agenda? Councilmember Singh.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to postpone AG 12, AG, AH, and AI till the next council meeting, so two weeks from now.
June 24th.
Twenty-four.
Okay, 24th, I think. So, motion's been made to postpone for two weeks. Items 12 AG, 12 AH, and 12 AI. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, it's been seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other items to be postponed? Councilmembers, okay. Are there any items to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent item?
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, time now for my mayor's report. I want to start by thanking everyone who came out to our 16th Annual Business Opportunities Breakfast. This breakfast is always a great opportunity for small businesses to connect with city leaders and partner agencies about upcoming work opportunities. We had nearly 500 people RSVP for this morning's breakfast, so it was a really huge turnout, and we're excited to expand the networks of our local businesses. A special thanks to Penny Owens and our entire purchasing team for organizing another successful event and for working so hard to connect with small business owners in the area. Another success to share, our free summer program, Kiderrific, kicked off last week thanks to everyone who came out to Chilhauwee Park. It was really well-attended. We had a record number of sponsors and hundreds of kids who seemed to enjoy every moment. Our next Kiderrific event is at Safety City tomorrow, beginning at 10:00 a.m., and again, this is completely free to the community. Before I move on, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the crowd here this evening. I see you. I appreciate that many of you are here tonight to stand up for vulnerable people in our community. As I look out... As I look out, I see people of all ages, see people of all races and backgrounds. Knoxville is a diverse community, and all of us together, including our immigrant neighbors, make our city a wonderful place to call home.[332.00][332.00](applause) From celebrating our LGBTQ community during Pride Month, to participating in the Juneteenth festivities next week, to supporting our immigrant neighbors, Knoxville has been and will continue to be a welcoming city.[356.56][356.56](applause) And now, I want to repeat the rules of decorum, which I announce at every meeting, but for many people who may not come to our meetings routinely, just wanted to make sure you knew about our rules of decorum. We are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum needed to sign up ahead of time with the city recorder before 4:00 p.m. Do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly, that is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note, if you disrupt a public meeting, you will be asked to leave or escorted out. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. That concludes my mayor's report. Now, we'll move on to reports of council members or committees. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everyone who has joined us tonight for tonight's city council meeting, and also to be a voice in this moment when many in our community are afraid by what they're seeing happen around the country. And one thing that I wanted to share during my report, and I have a couple of items that I wanted to address, but as many of y'all know, I want to support Knoxville remaining a welcoming city, and I appreciate the words shared by the mayor just a moment ago. And I also want to, you know, continue pushing for Knoxville to be a city that upholds the rights of all people. And I think there are some things that we can do, and additional ways that we can help support vulnerable populations. One way that we've discussed recently, and we have in our budget, is some funding for legal aid for their eviction prevention program. I support that, and I would like to see us support that at a higher level. What I've seen cities around the country do, in addition to something, in addition to something similar to an eviction prevention program, is a legal aid program that supports those going through deportation proceedings.[523.04][523.04](applause) And so, as we're discussing what can Knoxville's role be, the city of Knoxville, because we certainly have limitations as city leaders, and what we can do, but I challenge us to think broader than what we have done, and think about new ways that we can support vulnerable members of our community in this particular moment. Also, I wanted to follow up on a couple of things that I've brought up previously. One is continued concerns about funding for our community television. And as I get reports, this is the section of our meeting where we, as council members, share reports, and included in those reports are reports from our committee activity. And of late, I'm the representative on the Knoxville Community Media Board, and there's great concern about the future of funding for community television, as we're seeing. Not only folks move away from cable television, where a lot of that tax revenue comes from, but also as there's consideration of legislation at the federal level to even reduce how we would be able to appropriate or bring in taxes from those services. So, please, let's keep being creative and thinking about these services that we want to keep in our city, and understanding the challenges that they're facing. And then, the last thing I wanted to bring up is just an ongoing discussion that continues about the city council's role in amending the budget. And at our last city council meeting, I had an amended budget ordinance on the agenda that I withdrew, partially because it did not seem like there was support for it, but I'm concerned about why there might not have been support for it. And so, what I'm trying to clarify, and wanting my colleagues to be engaged in, is this conversation about line item budget amendments that we continue to have on city council. And I have a question into the law department that I'm hoping I'll get an answer on, but I'm still waiting on that answer, because it was the law department's opinion that the ordinance that I submitted conflicted with the charter. But I've gone through every relevant section of the charter and city code that I'm aware of, and it suggests to me that the ordinance I submitted aligns with the charter. And in fact, it requires city council to submit an amended budget ordinance that organizes the funds, well, the general fund by department, and so I'm not able to just generally amend the general fund as advised.
Councilmember Parker...
Yeah, sure.
...has five minutes, and there's several other council members also with their lights on, so I know Mr. Swanson has your communications and can respond back in the near future.
Okay, so I will share an update at our next city council meeting on that update. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind everyone and invite those who may not be aware that Thursday, June 19, will be the Juneteenth celebration. The Beck Center and the MLK Commission actually are having some...[793.01][793.01](applause) are having some events, and also the Juneteenth Parade. It will be kicking off at 10 o'clock. If you're in the parade, you have an organization, or you're walking in the parade, the lineup starts at 8:30 at the midway, and it will end at Dr. Walter Hardy Park. There will be retail and food vendors there. I encourage you, if you can't walk in the parade, or you're not going to be on the route, visit the park. Lot of great cultural things going on. And the 2025 Grand Marshals for the parade this year are Reverend Vincent Jones and his wife Alicia Jones of Tabernacle Baptist Church, who will be kicking off and leading the parade. So, please come out and enjoy those activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I want to share a situation that occurred a couple weeks ago. This is with my mother. She was driving in Knoxville in stop-and-go traffic, and you know when you take your foot off the brake and you idle? She hit somebody in that kind of idle. The person got out of the car, as people do. Everything was fine until she saw my mother's face and heard her accent. At that point, she was demanding my mother's documents. From the things that she was saying, it was quite obvious what she was wanting was not her driver's license, but legal proof of her residency here. My mother just said, "I'm going to wait for the proper authorities to get here." She started to move her car a little bit, just to see if there was any damage. The woman started recording her to say that she's fleeing from the authorities. Highway Patrol came, sheriff's office came, everything. She had her driver's license, her registration, just like normal stuff. I think they were so busy trying to de-escalate this other woman, they were quite polite to my mom, and there were... So, all the papers were in order, neither car was damaged, but what was damaged is... This is, I'm sharing such a tiny sliver of suffering of what is going on right now in so many places and in our home city.[941.23][941.23](applause) And as I share this with my council members and at city council, I am very well aware of the restrictions we have in our jurisdiction, the laws that we can make and can't make, and what we can do and not do. This is more federal, state, and county issues, but I know that we are a welcoming city, and that we want to treat every one of our residents with respect. I'd like to, there's somebody here, I'd like to make a statement on this topic. Calvin, if you wouldn't mind coming up? You have two minutes.
Am I supposed to do something with this? I think I just did.
Yeah.
You can state your name and address for the record, and just be aware, there's just two minutes left.
I'm okay, right?
No?
You can hear me.
We can hear you.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, ladies and gentlemen, I am the husband of an immigrant, I am the stepfather of an immigrant, and if you go back a couple of generations, I am the child of immigrants, as I believe every single person in this room is. Now, some were brought here against their will, I'm aware of that. Some were brought here, some came here as my ancestors did. They had no documents. They had a piece of paper that says there was a guy in Doylestown, Pennsylvania, who would pay for their trip over if they would work as his servants for three years, which they did. They bought a piece of land in North Carolina, and they started a small business, and they had children, and they achieved their version of an immigrant's dream. That's where I come from. My wife came as the wife of a scholar who was studying at Columbia University. He later taught at the University of Tennessee. My wife has two graduate degrees from UT. We are an immigrant family who's very strongly participating in the community, as all of these people are. You see the people standing right here. The one thing we all have in common is we're immigrants, and the other thing is, we're afraid. And I would like city council to be aware of the fear that exists in our community right now. From the woman who attacked my wife when she tapped her car, by the way, she went to court today, and the judge dismissed the case. There was nothing going on.[1117.23][1117.23](applause) We should be, I want us to be aware of our friends and neighbors who may not be the same color as us, who may not be the same, speak with the same accent, who may not go to the same church, but their kids go to school with our kids and our grandkids, and we need the respect that this city is known for and deserves to give.
Thank you, Calvin.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Oh, sorry, I forgot what I was speaking to, why my light was on. I just wanted to make sure everyone has it on their calendar as needed. Wednesday, June 18, at 3:00 p.m. is the Audit Committee. That's our next regularly scheduled meeting, and will be held in Room 461. If you have additional questions, you can contact myself or the Recorder's Office, City Council Office. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I really appreciated the story that Councilmember Singh conveyed to us. It's something we all need to take it hard, and also, Mr. Calvin Idol, the spokesperson. And I'd just like to briefly say just a word or two about due process of law, which is really the cornerstone of what makes a democracy work, and we need to underline that in our vigilance and as a society. I hope we keep mindful of it, because it applies to non-citizens and citizens alike. If it's taken away from non-citizens, the citizens are next, and so...[1238.58][1238.58](applause)
Thank you. That concludes members of council reports. We'll move on to the next item, please.
8D is a resolution confirming the mayor's nomination to reappoint Merite Perez and appoint Margaret Butler, all contingent on state approval, to the Knoxville County Planning Commission, formerly known as the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Thomas? Oh, okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I do, I think Margaret Butler's in the audience tonight. I'm not sure, I can't, it's a lot of people here. Thank you for your willingness to serve. We appreciate it.[1294.58][1294.58](applause) Next item, please.
9E is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Chapter 17, Section 17-210, to authorize automated enforcement systems for regulating speeding in school zones and motor vehicle noise at no direct cost to the city, and in support of these cities' Vision Zero initiative.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9F is an ordinance approving, rather appropriating, a sum of $1,500 from the Community Safety and Empowerment Budget, donating same to Yoke, in support of two summer adventure camps for youth, to keep young people engaged in positive activities over the summer.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9G is an ordinance appropriating a sum of $1,500 from Community Safety and Empowerment Budget, donating same to One Knoxville Collective, in support of the East Knoxville Soccer Academy Summer Program.
Second. Okay, I'm sorry.
G, ma'am.
G. There's already a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9H is an ordinance to approve and adopt the fiscal year 2026-2031 Knoxville Capital Improvements Program, including the fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvements Budget, city of Knoxville applicant, all districts.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, there's two people signed up to speak in opposition to item 9H. First person is Inzinga Amani. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
My name is Inzinga Amani. I live at 1312 Hawthorne Avenue. So, why am I up here to speak about something so boring as the capital improvements budget? Lots of folks who hear when they talk about the city government and municipalities, they'll say that the city has a limited impact on the local economy, but this plan actually outlines a major part of the city's impact in both how the land is developed and how the economy is developed here locally. Now, I want you all to notice the name of this fund, Capital Improvement Project, a program, not social improvement, not community improvement, capital. So, we can trace the history of this sort of development on a municipality level, and we can really trace a line from 1919 to right now. 1919, Red Summer. This was not only a hateful act that saw a white mob terrorizing black communities, falsely accusing a black man of raping a white woman, right? This was also a response to a thriving black community, and white folks being like, "I had enough of that," right? So, we're going to manufacture this whole event and actually attack the community. We didn't see the city after that say, "Oh, let's look at the black community, let's make sure we rebuild it, have a massive revitalization campaign." No, right? We just saw another instance of people being pushed out. We can look to urban renewal. Urban renewal, as we all colloquially know, is Negro removal, right? It's sort of decimation of black communities, right? Pushing black people out, destroying our economy, right? And then, we can look to right now with gentrification, right? The attack on black, brown, working-class, and poor communities. I say all this because it's not just things in the air going on. This is directly reflected in what we see before us today. So, we continue to see inequitable priorities, as far as where funding is and where it isn't. You know, we see limited money going to East Knoxville, about $2 million going to Lakeshore. And we continue to see limited to zero engagement with regular residents, working-class residents, residents who have stakes in the community, residents who historically have been here, right? For the most part, shut out of this whole process. So, this is $47 million we're talking about. Only $6 million of that is going to housing and neighborhood development, only $1.5 million going to permanent supportive housing, and most of that money is going to Western Heights, in a project that is long overdue to improve that community. We only have $6 million going to Parks and Rec. Out of that $6 million, we have a whole $2 million going just to Lakeshore, right? Under the skeleton, the bones of an old mental health hospital, right? We see Lakeshore have the fanciest, best park in the city, right? Versus everywhere else, underdeveloped, neglected, disinvestment, right? So, Lakeshore is getting the same amount of money as all the Burlington improvements. Same amount of money. One park equals all of Burlington. Lakeshore is getting this money as Chilhauwee Park's funding rolls out. Lakeshore is getting four times as much as Samy Hill, the park in Laundsdale. Right? And we also see volunteer lending, getting almost $1 million, with half of that going towards a bridge that no one wants, a bridge that's going to connect students to downtown, but what about the residents here? This isn't new. Tommy can tell you. I'm not sure what side you took on that, but clearly, most of the residents, a lot of the residents actually are not a fan of that bridge, and have been fighting that And this is when that budget is already having, the bridge is already getting $45 million from the state and federal money, yet this bridge is getting prioritized in this budget. So, the cycles of harm, colonization, push out of communities, gentrification, neglect, underdevelopment, all these things are alive and well today and seen in what you all have before you right now. Knoxville, we can do better.[1687.63][1687.63](applause)
Next person signed up to speak against this item is Constance Everie. Ms. Everie? She's not here. Okay, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on this item. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 8-1. Thanks. Next item.
10A is a resolution approving an appeal by Everett Hirsch of the denial of the Board of Zoning Appeals to increase the front setback in an IMU zoning district from a build-to-zone of 0 feet to 25 feet to 79.8 feet per Article 6.3, Table 6-1, for probably located at 137 West Anderson Avenue, 4th District.
Okay, we have members representing the appellant here, and they each will have, they may have up to three speakers, they will each have up to five minutes to speak, so we'll start with Mr. Everett Hirsch.
Hi, my name is Everett Hirsch. I live in Happy Holler, just off Central, on West Anderson Street, on a very narrow lot with me and my six-year-old daughter. I have a plan to build a small, modest home behind that home, under the IMU zoning, and I'm not going to use a lot of your time. I have a packet that I want to hand out to all of you with signed notes from my neighbors that also encourage the project. The plan is to be able to have my mother reside in the front home, which is a single family, and there'll be a two-story house on the back by the alley. family, and there'll be a two-story house on the back by the alley. That's about all I have. I'm gonna hand these out to you guys. Can I approach?
Sure, that's fine. And while you're, so you're done with your remarks?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. The next person is, we'll go ahead and have your, your attorney speak if you're concluded while he's passing that out. Mr. Benjamin Mullins, if you could start by saying your name and address.
Ben Mullins, 552 West Main Street, here for Mr. Hirsch. Send everybody, I sent through Mr. Johnson, everybody a letter today, just kind of outlining the position. I hope all of you all have had a chance to, to look at that. You know, when this was for the BZA, you know, we didn't have any, any public opposition. We, when we talked to codes, they didn't seem to have any issue. And so I think they really weren't prepared for the conversation about what the actual hardship was, and that's why the BZA denied it. And so I wanted to kind of focus in more on the standards. The, the issue with this house is, the lot is exceptionally narrow. And if you look at the language, both of the Tennessee Code annotated 137207, which is the statute authorizing the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then also this body to grant variances, and the codification of that, exceptional narrowness is one of the principal considerations for a hardship. In fact, the statute says, whereby reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific property at the time of the enactment of the zoning ordinance. And it goes on to say, the strict application of any regulation enacted under this part in Part III of this chapter would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties to, or exception, or undue hardship upon the owner of the property. The ordinance doesn't talk about practical difficulties, but the statute does. But I did go through and outline how we meet these standards, both in the, the statute and in the ordinance itself. Here, we've got a unique circumstance. We have a long, narrow, pre-existing lot where the house that is on it, which Mr. Hirsch bought, he actually didn't fix it up, so he could live in it with the intent of ultimately his mother living in it. And he bought it with the, in the IMU zone, knowing that you're allowed to have two principal residential structures on that property. What he didn't realize was that the, the IMU zone requires a build-to-zone. The building, actual, not a, not an extension of the building, but the building line itself has to be within zero to 20 feet from the, from the property line. And with a 25-foot lot, you can't do two principal structures and, and meet that. That would be the only variance that would be required. If you were to take a lot that's 25 feet wide and 100 feet long, which is what we're dealing with, and compress it, you know, changing the shape so it's not so exceptionally narrow, you could do and meet the build-to-zone, but you can't here. And so that is where the hardship lies. When you look at the standards, again, this is exceptionally narrow. It's allowed in the zoning ordinance. This is not just mere economic loss, but it's depriving the, the owner a beneficial use of his property, being able to put two residences on his property where he and his family can reside, and ultimately where it could be leased or sold to the public. Has two separate buildings. You could always make it one building, one bigger building, but that wouldn't allow there to be two residences on that. And here, we're in an area that is in, I think it's in Ms. Ryder's district in the fourth. It's Happy Holler. It's a, you know, 400 and some feet away from the intersection of West Anderson and North Central. There are sidewalks along this property. There's an alley that runs along the back, which allows access to the rear building. It's set up to be allowed to have two buildings on it, but for the, the build-to-zone. And again, but for the build-to-zone, you could do the two principal lots. So, and then, there's, there's no detriment to the public. There's not been anybody who has opposed this, not during the BZA, not here tonight. In fact, his neighbors have signed letters supporting this. The purpose of the build-to-zone, obviously, is so you don't have properties too far back, and so you have incongruent property lines. That purpose is still being served here because that building is going to stay. It's not going to be out of line with the other properties there. So the purpose of the zoning ordinance is also met. And these are all the, the criteria that are set forth in your zoning ordinance for granting a variance. Otherwise, we would have to do something, you know, ridiculous, like trying to build a, like a breezeway connection to it, which you could do, but it doesn't really set the building up to be used as two separate residences at that point. And so being able to use it as two separate residences is a beneficial use of the property. And he's being deprived of that for the strict application of this, of this build-to-zone. So I would ask, that really wasn't discussed, I don't think, lot width. It was referenced kind of offhand during the BZA, but it wasn't discussed. So I think looking at the language of the ordinance, by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific piece of property.
Mr. Mullins, your time's up.
You should be, you should please grant this variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Third person signed up to speak in favor of this is Logan Higgins. Mr. Higgins, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Logan Higgins, 133 South Gay Street. I definitely wanna echo everything that Mr. Mullins said about this case. And I'll, just to clarify, our firm is not doing architecture services. We're not involved in this in any way. I just heard about the case, and it caught my eye because it's kind of concerning to me that, with the strict interpretation of the build-to-zone as it is, the limitations that it creates for having more than one principal structure on a lot. This case in particular, I mean, it seems like a very clear-cut hardship because of the narrowness of the lot. And I definitely think that in this case, that is something that I hope that you all will reconsider this, the variance request. And I think more broadly, we should take a look at that interpretation when it comes to more than one principal building. Of course, accessory buildings are not required to be within that build-to-zone, but we have quite a few zones in the city that use build-to-zones as the front setback and side setbacks. And it could just be that we haven't seen a lot of cases where there was a second building that wasn't able to meet that. But I definitely think that, I would encourage you all to encourage the Plans Review Department and Zoning Department to take a closer look at that interpretation when it applies to more than one building. But with the case at hand, definitely hope that you all will see the hardship here and agree, and help Mr. Hirsch be able to build a second house to, to live in. And I'll add, you know, they mentioned that there are potential workarounds for it, maybe connecting with a breezeway. That doesn't change the spirit of following the code, because there's already a structure built within that build-to-zone. And I don't think that it makes sense to make them go through a bunch of workarounds to do something that is contradictory to the request, because that, that would then make it a duplex and not two single independent structures. The financing would be more complicated. The construction would be more complicated. It would, there's, with the right amount of time and money, you can solve any problem in any number of ways, but I think putting that level of hoops on something is, is a little unnecessary in this situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, there is no one signed up to speak in opposition to this, so I don't think there's any need for a rebuttal at this time. So, council members, it's your item to discuss. Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah. I'd like to call on Mr. Arons, I believe. BZA falls under you guys, if I'm correct. Is that correct, Mr. Arons?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When BZA takes applications for variances, what are the standards that they apply when looking at a variance? I can, I can ask Mr. Frost if.
So the standards for variances?
Yeah.
Straight out of the code, variances will be granted only where, sorry, Peter Arons, Plans Review and Building Inspections Director. Variances will be granted only where special circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting, fully described in the findings of the board, do not apply generally in the district. Variances will not be granted to allow a use otherwise excluded from the particular district in which it is requested. For reasons fully set forth in the findings of the board, the aforementioned circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of this code would deprive the applicant of any reasonable use of his or her land. Mere loss in value does not justify a variance. Therefore, there must be a deprivation of beneficial use of land. Any variance granted under the provisions of this section must be the minimum adjustment necessary for the reasonable use of the land. And granting of any variance is in harmony with the general provisions and intent of this code, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood, detrimental to the public welfare, or in conflict with the general plan for development.
Okay. Mr. Arons, a couple of things that were stated by the speakers is that an accessory building, that the build-to-zone does not apply to an accessory building.
That's correct.
So they would be able to build, like, an accessory dwelling unit in this zone?
Potentially.
Okay.
The answer is yes, if they meet all of the other regulations, as far as owner occupancy.
The requirements for setbacks?
Yes. Setbacks, owner occupancy of one of the structures.
Okay. And, and I believe the applicant has said that the intent is, and is currently owner-occupied, so that intent would be met. And then the other thing that was brought up and was also in the transcript from the BZA hearing is that there could be a breezeway to connect two separate units as well. I know that would change the evaluation of what was being built, but there's a couple of different ways to achieve getting an additional dwelling there.
There are.
Where the build-to-zone would not apply to those.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Frost, can I go back and touch on the hardship? When we are looking at this, it's not just, what are the, there's one requirement that is, that must be met in terms of use of the land. Could I get you to?
Thank you, Councilmember Ryder. What Mr. Arons briefly stated without going directly to it is Section 16.3E of the zoning code, which are the standards that the Board of Zoning Appeals and City Council applies in hearings such as this. And I believe, Councilmember Ryder, the one you're talking about is the third standard, briefly, would deprive the applicant of any reasonable use of his or her land. Mere loss in value does not justify a variance. There must be a deprivation of beneficial use of the land. And I think if you look at the record from the BZA, I think they made that determination that, that those requirements were not met.
So it's not the case of we would meet one standard of the hardship and not meet that standard? That standard is, like, is required?
Right. It says, the code says, all of the following criteria.
Okay. Okay. So it's not, pick one, it's all of the criteria? And as the land has use of it with a current single-family dwelling, the applicant does have use of the land?
I believe so.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Okay, motion's been made to deny the appeal. It's been made and seconded. Councilmember Ryder, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to deny, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seema, are you saying you're opposed? Okay. So the motion to deny carries. Okay? Yeah, sorry. I think we, do we need to do a second? A second thing, a motion to deny?
No, motion to deny, we'll do it.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to the next item.
Thank you all very much. Eleven J is a resolution honoring the memory of Brenda Palmer and to express City Council's condolences to her family upon the occasion of her passing.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Former Councilmember Nick Pavlis.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I appreciate you all bringing this forward. First off, I'd like to recognize some of my compadres from the past. Former Mayor and Councilmember Daniel Brown, former Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Finbar Saunders, and former Councilmember, Third District, which is appropriate. Ms. Palmer was representing Third District, Ivan Harman. Thank you, Ivan. Well, I'm gonna say this, she's looking down, but she's got a tight lip, because the last thing Brenda Palmer ever wanted was to be recognized. She didn't like that, but she certainly deserves recognition in, in the service that she gave to this city. She was smart. She was engaged in the city, in her district, and she was prepared. She never came to a meeting, and all you all that remember her, she was prepared and she knew what she was talking about. Charlie, you served as well, uh, Councilmember Thomas, you served as well, and you know what I'm talking about. Brenda was new to city politics when she got elected, but she certainly wasn't new to politics. She was active in Hillary Clinton's campaign, presidential campaign, was very active in that. And her and Don, her husband, I wanna recognize Don as well, who's passed, were just fine human beings. And Brenda was a very dear friend of mine, and I don't want this to be personal about Brenda and I, but I loved to talk to her, I loved to call her, and if Don answered the phone 30 minutes later, I got to talk to Brenda. Because Don was a talker, too, and he loved to talk politics as well. I hope that, my hope is, and I'm sure my former councilmembers, is that we can find something in the Third District that would appropriately bring to the naming committee to honor Ms. Palmer's service to this city. And, and just lastly, I would just like to say that I wanna thank this current council and all the counselors, councils that I can remember in years gone by, that we care about the poor, the people who are disadvantaged in this community, and hope that you all continue forward with that quest. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna ask you, either Vice Mayor Saunders or Mayor Brown, has any more comments to add to the mix?
Yes, just a few. I know that you have a long agenda tonight, and I don't wanna add to the time, but to American canon and members of council, I think I served with Charles Thomas on council. And to all of you in the viewing audience and all here assembled, I met Brenda Palmer in 2009, when we were all running for city council. Brenda Palmer did several outstanding things for this city. One of the things in her district, or what was her district, the Third District, is Crestview Cemetery. I have family members buried there. And it was Brenda Palmer who put together the city, the county, to work on making sure that that cemetery is taken care of. It's the largest African-American cemetery in this city. I want to say one other thing that's a little bit off of Brenda Palmer, but when you have the Juneteenth celebration, David Hayes just mentioned about urban renewal, that celebration at Hardy Park would take place in my family's front and backyard. My mother, father, and grandparents bought that property in 1932. The city decided it was no longer needed and tore it down. I'm still not happy about it. I would never be happy about it. But I wanna thank Brenda Palmer for her commitment, her dedication, her service to the City of Knoxville, and also had an opportunity to work with her husband, her late husband, Don, with the Knoxville County Election Commission. We worked in a small assembly room together, and Don was an outstanding person in his own right. So that was a powerful couple that we no longer have, but wanna thank both of them for their service to this city. Thank you for listening.
Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. Brenda was my predecessor, and I learned from her the work ethic involved with council, and I know that she was always prepared. She would continue to call me after I was on council to just talk about what we were voting on. She stayed interested and involved for many, many years. And I know a lot of us will miss her very, very much.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just echo that. Brenda was such a jewel, and one thing about it, she- Brenda was such a jewel, and one thing about it, she was gonna make sure that she shared her opinion, whether you wanted to hear it or not. And Mayor, if it's not out of protocol, I would like for members of council, if we could just stand for a moment of silence in her honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, I've made some previous remarks about Brenda Palmer in earlier meetings. I won't repeat those, but I will add that on an earlier term of service, I was fortunate enough to serve under Mayor Dan Brown. Councilmember Nick Pavliss sat on this side of me, and Brenda Palmer sat on this side of me. And as a rookie, they both took me under their wing and showed me the nuts and bolts and were always open to helping me get adjusted to the job and oriented. Brenda, at the earliest opportunity, just took me out to lunch and answered any questions. She was already there to kind of get me in order. And so, all the things you've heard about work ethic, analytical abilities, caring for a neighborhood, being in touch with the neighbors, it's all true. I, you know, witnessed it firsthand. And, you know, we lost not only a good member of the community, but a friend. So, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you. Council, thank you for bringing this resolution. I had the opportunity to get to know Brenda a little bit when I was serving on the school board. As you know, she was a teacher, longtime teacher, and a passionate advocate for public schools, and I was glad to share that passion with her. So really appreciate her service to our community in so many ways for so many years, and that we are taking the time to recognize that tonight is so important. We only have so much time here on this planet, and it's important to recognize people's contributions when we can, so. Seeing no further lights on, I guess we vote on this. All those in favor, please say aye. I don't think anyone's opposed. Motion carries. Thank you so much to our former colleagues for being here. We appreciate your attendance and your contributions as well. Thank you.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents, all necessary documents, to sell surplus real property located on Moody Avenue to Michael Seamer for $4,444.44.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Thomas?
I just wanted to acknowledge that this is a situation that we like to see where unused property is sold to a developer and it will be developed in some way, I'm not sure which, and added to the tax roll. It's in Councilmember Smith's district, and I'm sure he will be vigilant as to the development and how it impacts the neighborhood. But, you know, when we talk about taking unused property and blighted property, I like to acknowledge when it happens and appreciate engineering taking over this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an air rights easement agreement to allow certain utility features to span the public right-of-way of the alley located at 2439 East Magnolia Avenue and 2436 East Fifth Avenue.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Parker?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to comment after there was somewhat of an introduction to this item, but I guess there's not necessarily discussion. But I'd love if someone could describe briefly what this is about.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. This is yet another investment on the Magnolia Avenue corridor, which we're very eager to support, and this is just one small item that's part of a greater, a bigger project. It's in conjunction with Phil Lawson's work around the Grand de Flora Project, and he is investing millions of dollars to convert the old Baptist tabernacle into an event center. So really appreciate Mr. Lawson's investment. This is an important part of our city. He's preserving a building and turning it into something that'll be a community amenity. So looking forward to seeing it develop.
And the aspect of this project that I really like and appreciate and I wanted to thank the developer for is the investment in solar. And so this, this is needed, so I think that they can run electrical and solar panels across this alleyway. But I'm super excited and grateful when there's investment in solar. So just wanted to lift that up.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed to Gary Chesney for one parcel of property located at 412 Akala Drive, parcel ID number 058KB0501, within the limits of the City of Knoxville pursuant to the Homemakers Program for a contract sales price of $40,250.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, very similar to my last comments, this is another situation where blighted property is being taken over and converted to better use, and we will receive tax dollars exceeding what it was there before and increase in city revenues. So again, I wanted to commend Director DeBeau and acknowledge, again, this conversion of unused or blighted property into better use with a higher tax base, and it's a good way to get revenue that's kind of painless. This will also, I'm sure, benefit that neighborhood as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you. Yeah, I had questions about this development. I did reach out to Director DeBeau and had my questions answered. For me, when there are projects that largely the benefit to the city is the removal of light, I always like to try to push for a little bit more. And in this case, the property will be sold at market rate and then revenue from that sale would be donated to a local nonprofit. But what I, you know, I had a little bit of concern that that local nonprofit focused their activities outside of our community. So it just felt like in this situ, in these moments when we got a little negotiation power, I would rather see that benefit come to that immediate local community rather than that piece of the agreement that's been included. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Knoxville Botanical Garden and Arboretum for an annual amount not to exceed $50,000 to provide operational budgetary support.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? I will note, I think the Executive Director, Sharon Moore, is here to answer any questions if you have any. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Helen Ross McNabb Center Incorporated to provide funding in the annual amount of $25,000 for essential services of the sexual assault center of East Tennessee.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to extend for one year the Victims of Crime Grant, or Act Grant from the State of Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs for an additional amount of $150,546 with no required local match.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. For this agenda item, and I'm planning to support this agenda item, but as I've been going through the budgeting process, this year especially, I discovered a new section in the code that I hadn't discovered before about our budgeting process. And when I saw this agenda item on today's agenda, I thought it was a great opportunity to highlight that section in our code in case others weren't aware of it. And so, put a call in to Rob Frost to see if he could help me explain this section of the code and I believe what the code caused a budget resolution.
Mr. Frost?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Parker. I'm referencing Ordinance Section 2-578, and I placed it, members of council's chairs before the meeting, everyone has a copy of it, and it's entitled Budgeting Requirements of Borrowed Funds Proceeds From Sale of Bonds and Funds Accepted By, excuse me, Accepted as Grant. In Part A, briefly, if the city is getting, you know, money from the issuance and sale of bonds or accepting of funds based upon grant applications on behalf of the city, the city shall adopt or approve, the council, a budget on how that money is supposed to be spent. And you'll see that in your agenda item. The form does not, looks like it's a State of Tennessee form in that. And it says, "The budget required under this section shall be prepared under the direction of the mayor and shall consist of line item identification of projects and purposes for which the funds are to be expended, as well as provide for a contingency fund, if not more than 10% of each item," and so on and so forth, "if there's an overrun or unbudgeted expenditure." Part B of that ordinance pertains to proceeds from the sale of bonds or grants, and it says they shall be expended or encumbered only in accordance with a budget previously approved by a resolution of council. This item is on the agenda as a resolution tonight. And then Part C, "Council may reappropriate such funds as it deems advisable from one line item to another form, to another or from one bond fund to another on recommendation of the mayor or on its own initiative. Such action by council shall be in the form of an amendment to the budget resolution."
Thank you so much for reading through that. I found that section interesting, and we've had these resolutions come before as before, and you all may be, you know, fully aware of this section of the code and the fact that these are budget resolutions, but I wasn't aware of that, and so I wanted to highlight that. And also the fact that this section also gives us the ability to make amendments to the budget from one line item to another, which for a grant contract does not make a lot of sense to me. So I'm still exploring this section of the code and what the intentions of it are, but it's a part of our budgeting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12R is an ordinance to amend the capital budget and the operating budget, both as approved by Ordinance Number 0-53-2024, for fiscal year 20, excuse me, for fiscal year 2024-2025, in order to transfer surplus excess or unencumbered funds between various units and funds as reflected in the various funds and budgets of the City of Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12S is an ordinance levying an additional one-half of 1% local option sales tax within the City of Knoxville in addition to the existing countywide rate on sales within the county.
Council, we have several people signed up to speak to this item. We'll start with those who signed up to speak in favor. First signed up is Mr. Brandon Bruce. Mr. Bruce, are you, there you are. If you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
The tallest goes first? Is that how it goes?
I do think the podium can rise up, but, oh, that's the highest it goes, sorry.
All right, we maxed it out.
Okay. We can hear you.
Brandon Bruce, I live at 9532 Klingmans Dome Drive. That's in North Shore Town Center, and so one of the neat things about living there is that every house in the neighborhood is in a PRZ, so a parental responsibility zone. And so I was really excited, if you can get excited about a five-year plan, I was excited about this plan because there's 27 projects in there that are sidewalks in a PRZ area. Ours is already all covered, so we have sidewalks throughout the neighborhood, which makes a great place to live. So we walked both my daughter and my son to school for eight years, and that's like one of the best parts of our Knoxville experience. I also started recently a coworking space, which is right next to the stadium in Old City, and so I can say from there, unequivocally, Knoxville is growing, and that's what makes an exciting place to be. So we've had members join to start early-stage tech companies from Atlanta, from Nashville, from Chicago, they're coming from all over the country to build businesses here. And so not only are we growing in residence, but we also have a view out the window to the stadium, and so clearly we're growing in visitors and tourists. And so to me, when I saw this proposal for the local option sales tax, I thought, well, we're a growing city, and to continue to be a growing city, continue to be a vibrant city, we need to invest in those core services and resources and infrastructure. Sidewalks, parks, greenways, I'm a heavy user of greenways, for those of you, when I was here speaking three years ago, on my little knee scooter after I'd hit a bear on a bike ride, I ride on the greenways all the time. So especially Third Creek, that goes all the way from west downtown, and sometimes I walk to work, which seems like a silly choice because it's 18 miles, but it takes me four to five hours and I can get to Old City in time. So I'm a heavy user of the greenways. My kids have enjoyed the parks since they were really little, they're teenagers now, but I think they've played on playgrounds across, when I was trying to count, 12 to 15 of the parks across the city. So seeing that so many playgrounds are provided for in the five-year plan under the sales tax, I'm excited about that as well. So those are the main reasons that I wanted to talk today. I think, having talked with a lot of friends about this, our sort of back of the napkin was, it looks like we can accomplish in five years what would probably normally take about 20. So it's an acceleration of our ability to support the growth of Knoxville, not only for all of us who live here, but it's a way to make sure that the visitors and the tourists that come to our city also contribute. It's a sales tax, so everyone that comes here that's spending money at the stadium, going out to dinner, staying in a hotel, doing all the things that we all love to do here, we benefit. Our parks, our sidewalks, our greenways, our affordable housing, our facilities, our senior centers, et cetera. As we all know, groceries are accepted, some other key items are accepted in order not to be too much of a burden on families that live here. So all in all, thank you all for considering it. I hope that City Council passes it and that we all get to vote for it on the ballot in November. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Next person signed up to speak in favor is Matthew Zing. Is Mr. Zing present? There you are, okay. If you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Hi, never done this sort of thing, so bear with me. My name is Matthew Zing. I live at 2518 Woodbine Avenue. I operate a nonprofit bike shop in the Old City, and I'm also here speaking on behalf of the Knoxville Greenways Commission in support of the local option sales tax. When me and my partner bought our first home in the Park Ridge neighborhood, one of the things that was so attractive about the neighborhood was the sidewalks and the access to parks that, you know, me and my four-year-old son could go visit. So I was excited to hear about this local sales tax option because the things that I value in a city, that I value in Knoxville, is its walkability, and I like going to the parks with my son. And I might be a bit biased, but having a bikeable community and being able to explore and access parts of my city safely with my child are very important to me. In the five-year investment plan, there is something in nearly every district that will, that I will benefit from personally. Specifically in my neighborhood, the First Creek Greenway connectors that will hopefully make getting to grocery stores in other parts of the city a lot easier, as well as... make getting to grocery stores and other parts of the city a lot easier, as well as, sorry, you know, having easier access to the Knoxville Botanical Gardens. So in addition to that, I'm excited to see also the reconnecting Knoxville and all the East Knoxville Greenway developments that are going to be happening there. I, but, that being said, I'm also excited to see what will happen with the Jawaee Park, which I feel is an underutilized resource in my neighborhood. But I also am more than happy to personally pay the half-cent tax if it means creating a more vibrant community for my neighbors, regardless of what district they are in. I know that Knoxville is growing, there's stresses on our infrastructure, and I see it firsthand, working in the Old City, but I know that growing can be hard, and I think something like this, it's important to have foresight, and I would appreciate if, and I am here to speak in support of putting the local sales tax option up on the ballot. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Third speaker in favor of item 12S is Hannah Kidderman. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Thank you very much. My name is Hannah Kidderman. I live at 9710 Grove Lake Way. I'm here in place of BikeWalk Knoxville. We are a local advocacy organization here in Knoxville, championing biking and walking for all. So since our organization was founded in 2012, BikeWalk Knoxville has been advocating for infrastructure projects like sidewalks and greenways to improve walkability and bikability in our community. These projects are often expensive, but we know our neighbors desperately need and deeply deserve connectivity. The revenue from the proposed sales tax increase would be spent on priorities, including affordable housing, facilities and maintenance, greenways, and road paving, parks, and sidewalks and traffic calming. As an organization focused on active transportation, we are thrilled to see projects in this plan, like sidewalks, which provide connectivity between schools and nearby neighborhoods, and greenway connections, making our network better meet transportation and recreation needs across communities. We are really excited to see the prioritization of safe routes to schools. The five-year neighborhood investment plan prioritizes sidewalks within the one mile of elementary schools and one and a half miles of middle and high schools, so the parental responsibility zone, or the PRZ, and that will impact neighborhoods surrounding nearly half the schools in the city. This aligns with our work to ensure that every student in our community can walk, ride, or roll to school safely by ensuring they have access to safe infrastructure. There are multiple sidewalk projects being proposed in each district with this plan. We're really excited to see prioritization of greenway connectivity. Knoxville has an exceptional network of amazing greenways, trails. The five-year neighborhood investment plan not only funds the maintenance of existing greenways, but also includes dollars for eight new greenway extensions, and we are really excited to see prioritization of traffic calming, specifically the 12 and a half million over the next five years going towards those projects. This investment will allow the city to address the backlog of communities who want traffic calming in their neighborhoods, to slow down cars, and make streets safe for all users. So we are very in favor of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel members, we have two people signed up to speak in opposition to item 12S. The first is Lindsay Jeromeco. Is Ms. Jeromeco present? Lindsay Jeromeco, are you present? Okay, I don't think she's present. Next person is Inzinga Amani.
Yes, my name is Inzinga Amani. First off, I am not against taxes. Personally, I think taxes are great when you're targeting the rich. I think anybody who calls themselves a community-minded person, or any sort of person with progressive politics, would agree that we need to be taxing more people more often to get more money for our people, right? But sales taxes are inherently aggressive. What does that mean? It's felt most by poor people and working-class people, right? If you already have lots of money, what is a few extra cents to you? If you live and check the check, and you're pinching pennies, then every dollar counts. But also, the state, because of the state we live in, there's limited avenues for money for municipalities. So we live in a, you know, it's a complicated situation, right? But nonetheless, we should have, we should have the priorities of caring for our people and preparing and caring for the people who have the least, right? So it is possible for taxes to be used for the better of the community, so we should have an open mind in general, right? But we need to make sure when we're doing things that we have pure intentions, right? So we need to make sure that we're not catering to multimillionaires and billionaires, right? So we've already seen somebody, one of the elites in our city, what billionaire, multimillionaire, however much money he has, Randy Boyd, Randy Boyd successfully pressured our city into letting him build a stadium here, a stadium of gentrification, as many people call it, right? And I remember him saying, yes, and I remember him saying he wasn't going to use any city money, but then, a few months out of that, what happens? He comes back to City Council, can I get more money? Can I get more money? Right? We know that Boyd has a vested interest in more tourism and people coming to his baseball game, so he can get more money, right? So, are we improving infrastructure all of a sudden because of Randy Boyd? Right? When we talk about tourists, something wrong with having tourists in our city. We want to show the world how wonderful we are, right? But when we prioritize tourists over residents of the city, that's where things go astray, right? So are we doing these improvements because tourists are coming, right? Are we saying we need more infrastructure improvements because people in Knoxville need them? Because undoubtedly, we are going to see a lot of growth. It's coming, right? Especially as more and more climate disasters happen, right? Especially as more and more, things are unstable around the region, it's harder to live in rural areas, we are going to grow. So are we being a city that's actually welcoming and affordable for people coming in? Or are we just saying, you know, if you got a lot of money, come on in. If you don't, welcome to the struggle bus, right? Who are we prioritizing? And just as a quick idea, right, it would be amazing if Knoxville was one of the cities who took a sales tax revenue and said, we are going to let the people decide. There are things called participatory budgeting. If you're on council, you've heard me talk about this for years, right? Where people can actually submit ideas, and people can actually vote for those ideas, right? So there's actually really good ways to spend money that I don't think we're really considering. And moreover, when it comes to the sales tax, there's not enough exceptions. The next budget, the next item on this agenda, we're going to get more into exceptions for the sales tax, so I'm going to go into it more there. And some people have said that 50% of the taxpayers who are paying for sales tax live out of town, don't live in Knoxville. That, that stat, I can't find it anywhere, right? And Knoxville's a hub in our local region, so yes, there's people who come here to shop for neighboring counties, because they don't have what we have, right? We shouldn't be looking at them all greedily like, oh, like how can we squeeze more money out of y'all, right? So there's different buckets when it comes to how this money's being spent, right? So affordable housing, facilities and maintenance, greenways, and pavings and parks. You know, when it comes to affordable housing, we're not seeing much guarantees, right? How do we know that this money is going to be spending money, this fund's going to be spending money on affordable housing for the years down the line, right? There's no guarantees. Why don't we see any funding for a permanent supportive housing, right, for all ages? Where's the funding for shelters for homeless people, for the houses community, right? Where is the money for black and brown developers and contractors to actually build some of these houses? The city spends millions of dollars on contracts, black contractors get one, less than 1% of that. When it comes to facilities and maintenance, what about our sustainability goals? When it comes to greenways and pavings, right, how are we making sure we're putting these in equitable places and not just fueling gentrification, not just fueling different populations come in, right, but actually looking after the interest of those residents? And when it comes to parks, is also, how do we make sure that we're actually investing equitably? So it's not just Lake Shore and West Knoxville getting all the parks, but actually East Knoxville, South Knoxville, and other working-class areas. So sales taxes can be a powerful tool.
Thank you very much.
And I hope this is, I hope this is much better when it comes to the voters.
Counsel members, as you get ready to discuss and ask questions and have a discussion on this important item that I have proposed to you all, I just want to share a couple reflections. First, I want to thank council members for your work. I know a lot of you set aside a lot of time to meet with staff and myself and others to help develop a refined five-year plan. That was the number-one thing we heard and we expected to hear after the workshop. We need more specifics. So I appreciate your work in developing those specifics. And I do want to say that the plan not only reflects the input of council, this council, but it reflects years of community input on our sidewalk plan, on our bike plan, on our greenways plan, many, many community meetings, many, many hours of meetings and input, and yet those plans often are gathering dust on the shelves of our offices because we do not have sufficient funds to implement them, or we do it in very small incremental measures. So I am really pleased, I know we are calling this a local option proposal, but I call it a neighborhood investment proposal, that's going to be funded through a half-cent increase through local option sales tax. We are talking about things, not for tourists and visitors, but for first and foremost, the people who live and enjoy our community, our neighbors in our neighborhoods. We are talking about things that people have asked for and needed, and that make our city have a high quality of life, and are also progressive in terms of our investments in our community centers, which is also the location of some of the most affordable, high-quality childcare in the city. It's about investments in sidewalks, which are used by people, rich and poor, and some people who don't have cars are using sidewalks and greenways as their primary way to get around. There is no one bright shiny object in this plan, that's not what this is about. It's about ensuring a high quality of life for the next generation, and it's about fixing things before they become unfixable, and making sure during these uncertain times that we use local dollars for local projects, which is just more important than ever. Many people have asked, why now? We didn't have to do this. We could just kick the can down the road. But I'm not a believer in kicking the can down the road. And as President Kennedy once said, "The time to repair the roof is when the sun is shining." So we got some holes in our roof, it's, we got some leaks, we got some infrastructure that needs attention, and the longer you wait to do that, the more expensive it gets and the worse it is for the quality of life of the people we're here to serve. So I know we are responsible leaders, and we need to address things proactively. And I also just think that this action before you tonight, first and foremost, is letting the voters decide. Voters in many surrounding counties and across the state have already voted to optimize their local option sales tax for similar infrastructure improvements in their communities. So we want to give, I want to give, and I hope you will too, the City of Knoxville voters that same opportunity. And I am very aware, as are all of you, that there are people in our community that are struggling, and that sales tax is regressive, and that's why your next agenda item would be to consider an exemption for groceries. And groceries, again, are defined by the State of Tennessee, not, we don't have the authority to define those. So we talked about these at length at our workshop a couple weeks ago, and I look forward to hearing your discussion today. Unless there's no questions, all those, I don't see any lights. Okay, well, hope springs eternal. Vice Mayor Smith?
Go ahead.
Or I don't know, if you, Councilmember Zing? I'm not sure. Everyone came all at once.
Go for it.
We'll have our turns.
Go for it.
Okay, Councilmember Zing.
So the five-year plan that you put out, is that, has that been, is that fixed in place, or can we continue having conversations? Like just today, I got three or four more phone calls with constituents pointing out things that they were interested, and I know we can't do everything, but I am wondering if this is a list that we can work on.
Yes, it's a list we can work on.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, Vice Mayor Smith, I'm not sure if you were next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There's two main things I wanted to discuss, but I do want to encourage, we had a workshop, I encourage, thanks for the shout-out for Knoxville Community Media and your role on that, so public, go watch that workshop that we had on Knoxville Community Media. I plan to support this to allow voters to choose. I do think this is a massive investment in housing and neighborhoods, and I do think it's a reasonable consideration for the residents of Knoxville. So if it wasn't reasonable, I wouldn't be voting to put it before them. The past few weeks, I've been talking about this with neighborhoods in the first district, and there's two specific things that I want to address. One is the list of projects, and two is the accountability to make sure that these things get done as we approve. And I may run out of town for the second one, so I'll go for the first one first. One of the things that I've learned over the past five years is the number of stages involved in infrastructure, seeing the vision, getting community buy-in, it takes years. And there's four basic stages. One is a prioritization. So we all know that sometimes starts with a study, that you got to assess which one. Equity was mentioned many times, we all care about that, and so which one's at the top? So prioritization, you got to make the list. And that comes from years and years of the same neighbor, and the next neighbor, and the next neighbor saying, fix the sidewalk, get us a sidewalk, get us a sidewalk, for example. The second thing is design, and so then you got to have funding for either the city, or with help from a partner, to design the thing, whatever it is, whether it's a community center, a park, a greenway, so the design stage. And then the third is funding, which is what this would help accelerate. So, some of the phone calls and conversations I've had are, yeah, that's been on the list for years, what's taken so long? Well, money is what's taken so long for a lot of these things, it's not for a lack of trying. And then you got to build the thing. So, these are Tommy's buckets, there's no book that's going to give you these four buckets, these are mine, but these take at least five years, every single thing on here, from the first time, or even the 50th time somebody advocated for them, takes five, some of these 15 years. And so, the question around prioritization and how are these chosen, I think is very, very important, I think basically for the public to hear most. Most of these projects have been stuck in the first two stages of those that I just mentioned for years. So they've been sitting there, there's a plan, there's a park that has a design, and they're on the shelf waiting for enough money to do that one, because it's 17th in line, or speed calming, that has zero budget for doing any of those. But what's important, I think, to remember is, for these infrastructure things that are the most quality-of-life changes you can make to any neighborhood, they're happening every week of every year. And what I mean by that is, they're happening for the first district at the South Knoxville Community Center, the Woodlong Christian Church, City View, and every other meeting that takes place for those neighborhoods, the first district, my colleagues are probably tired of hearing me saying this, there's 10 of them, and they meet every month. And so I go to them, ragged, dragging a kid, promising ice cream, whatever. My point is, there's not a fresh start now of what do we do? These are all coming from people who have been talking about this for years and years and years. And so, I hear those. So when I had heard this opportunity, there's no question of like, which things do we need to do? They're a front and center, and there's more pages that you can count. So I think we have a chance, I think, for the community to decide, I think Mr. Bruce put it well, these things are either important enough to exchange $60 to $140 a year on average per person for 20 years' worth of work to get done in five. I think that's the decision before the voters, and so I'm happy to put that decision before them. But I also want to say a couple other things, back to the dialogue about what are the priorities of the district, and each of us know what they are. What you all are seeing on Tuesday nights is 5% of the gig. So 95% of the gig is making walks with people, sitting in neighborhood meetings, and so this is not us coming to the table the first time, this is 5% of this job. So anybody that wants to do this, just believe me, that the hours we're going to spend tonight are a fraction, a small fraction of those. But I want to tell you one of a thousand stories. So Young High Pike on Chapman Highway and, at the intersection of Chapman Highway and East Young High Pike, there's 120, more than 125 kids there that are in middle school age that go to South Hill Middle School. And I get a call, like clockwork, I'll tell everybody that wants to ask, in November, just humor me here for 30 more seconds. The first week in November or two, when the clock changes and it gets dark early, I get a phone call from new residents saying, who do I got to yell at to get a sidewalk, because my kid's having to walk in the dark at 6:30 in the morning to school? And so, I go walk with them, or, thank you, most recently, the cat bus now has a free route, or I'll go ride the bus with them, and they bring the kid, and we walk ride to school. That wasn't on this list originally, but it's on the big, long list. My point is, these stories are told to us every single day, over and over, every year, and so these questions around what's on this list, we can debate or get input about changes, and I'm 30 seconds.
We can come back to you, too.
All right. The point is, these lists that are on here.
Vice Mayor, yeah. I want to be fair to everyone. I want to be fair to everybody, your colleagues.
Thank you for my applause.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Singh.
I think there are other people who didn't get a chance.
Oh, Councilmember McKenzie.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Singh. McKenzie, you guys can decide who wants to go next.
I can go.
When I popped up, I know you will. When I popped up earlier, it was just because I looked at the list and realized that there were a few things that I hadn't talked about. But going back to the item at hand, I know that sales tax are the most regressive tax that there is, right? For every $2, it's 1 cent more. There is the concept that it is people, what really amazed me was to find out at the workshop the other week, that after $1,600, the state does not allow us to take local taxes. That's the cutoff.
Yeah, and that's state law.
Yeah. So it's regression upon regression, right? But so many people I've talked to are in favor of this. Like I said, I know that this is, at this point, property taxes, the housing market is so heavy, I don't think that's a place that we can go to. We don't have an income tax, which, no. So this is something that I am in support of. And I guess on the next item, we'll just, I have a few other things to discuss.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know when we look at this five-year neighborhood investment plan, and what we have before us in our districts are projects specifically that we are saying that if this were to pass, and it's on the ballot, and the voters in the city say, yes, this is what we want, that we are committing that we can get these things accomplished in five years.
Correct. And we'll have a tracker on the webpage, so everyone can watch our progress.
So I know that the funding is a huge piece of it. However, do we have the staff and the manpower to be able to deploy and make these things happen? Because it's pretty aggressive, and what I'll say is just how level, for the Sixth District, which I noticed that most of the two media stations that I looked at last night did not specifically say the streets, but of course, all of them are around schools. Boyd's Bridge Pike, near Brooks Avenue, it's around Sarah Moore Green, Boyd's Bridge Pike near Border, College Street and Journalman, Beaumont Castle Street and Wilson, Austin East, and Wilson near South Hembry, where these sections of sidewalk are desperately needed. There's no doubt about that. Hoston River Park renovations to the playground equipment, infrastructure, Chihawee Park, East Knoxville Greenway, and renovations to Dr. E.V. Davidson Community Center, in addition to road paving and those types of things. I guess I do realize that if this were to pass, that yes, the dollars would be there. I think I'm just kind of concerned, would we have the manpower to make it happen in five years?
That's a good question. And you know, when I was at the Business Opportunity Breakfast this morning, I was talking about the opportunities of the next budget year, which is already available. But I did mention that if this passes, there are going to be a lot more business opportunities for people who do construction and engineering and other things. So we do some of this work in-house, but a lot of it is contracted out, and that's how we would be able to do this expeditiously. And again, because it's local dollars as opposed to state or federal, that's a lot fewer hoops that we have to jump through. And so I think we'd be able to move more quickly and have local control. And again, it would also be a way to put these dollars into the jobs of the people doing the work, who will generally not be city employees. They'll be people that we contract with.
Do you foresee opportunities to maybe expand some positions at the city as well as a result of these projects, potentially?
That's not anticipated, but I mean, I wouldn't preclude that. One of the reasons that we crafted it this way is that we're not expanding any programs or adding staff. It's about doing more with what we already have, and also, you know, prioritizing things that the city neighbors, our community, has already said they want to do. So this does not contemplate adding any positions to the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Helsley.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I was just, when I met with city officials, to remain unnamed, Ms. Ball, but anyway, no. I would be pretty brutal about sidewalks because I literally, all over the city, not just in my part of town, I hear about sidewalks pretty much all day, every day. It is a really, really big point of contention for the ones who don't have them. So the two things I asked for was specificity of projects and, of course, the continual harping on sidewalks. And so they kind of came back with both of those. We have a timeline. We have sidewalks projected within the PRZ, which is amazing. So for those reasons, I'm going to definitely support this to go on the ballot in November. There's a lot of more good stuff, but that was just my personal stuff.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, so I have a couple of finance questions probably, but I just want to say, for anyone listening or anybody who's studying up on this or questioning about it, we keep bringing up sidewalks. And if you look at the list for the Fourth District, there's a lot of sidewalks in there because there's a lot of need, and there's a lot of kids that are walking to school and don't have sidewalks. And if you look at the sidewalk study, I think you'd be somewhat surprised where the sidewalks are and where the sidewalks aren't. I've helped families figure out how to get to school without sidewalks by finding bus stops outside of the parent responsibility zone, so they have to go backwards and away from the school to find a safe way to school. I also want to give a shout out to Bike Walk Knoxville. I know someone here spoke a few minutes ago, because they actually go out, and if anybody's not signed up for their emails, I really encourage you to do that. They go out and they plan walks to examine and look at places where a lot of our students trying to get to schools and ADA community walk, and they look at the problems, they look at places, and they're a nonprofit. They're not paid for, they're not part of the city budget. But anyway, they look for some of those problems and then point them out to city staff and invite the mayor and the elected officials and the engineers to go, city engineers, to go on these walks. And what you will see from those, I'm going to run out of time and have to have another turn, but what you will see from those walks, and I really encourage you, if you haven't gone, please go on them. The engineers will come on those walks and the elected officials and other city staff, particularly the engineers, and they will see the problems that get pointed out to them by a layperson who points out. One of the improvements we looked at on one of the walk happened to be West High School, where I think a pedestrian or a student got hit in the crosswalk, and the city engineering was able to make some improvements to guide cars so they wouldn't clip walkers. If anybody's driven past West High School, there's a huge amount of students walking to and from that school. So that's a really important service that they offer, and I really like doing those walks with them, and I like being able to do those walks with the engineers and get their perspectives. And we've been out on some of those walks before, and then engineers will be like, oh, this light's out of sync, or this isn't working, or we could do something pretty inexpensive to make this better. Even though we have, and that's my finance question, I think one of them is Ms. Ball or Mr. Evans, the sidewalk study, which was a huge public input process, lots of community meetings, and we refer to it constantly, and there's no room in the budget for it this year for any of the new sidewalks. What is the dollar figure for all of the sidewalks in there that we have not been able to fund? Whoever would like to give me an answer.
Mr. Claybo or Ms. Ball?
Mr. Rosenberg.
Mr. Rosenberg.
To answer. It was around a billion dollars.
I think it's close to a billion.
But is it gone down over time?
There's no way it's gone down.
I think that's very frustrating as a council member because you're out in the community all the time, and people are like, my kid has to walk to school. And my kids can walk to school and have sidewalks the whole way because of where I live. But there's a lot of people in the Fourth District that can't, and in many other places, that can't walk to school because there are no sidewalks to get there. And the answer, when I get these emails and these phone calls, is, I'm sorry you're not getting a sidewalk in mine or your lifetime because it's not going to fit in the budget. And so on that note, Mr. Evans, we already get some local option sales tax. How much do we get for the local option sales tax? What's in the current budget?
For the last audited year, I think it was, I won't say it was 66 million, something like that, from local option sales tax.
That the city keeps and goes to the general fund that we're able to use for projects. What of the local option goes, we hand back over to the schools?
To the schools. They, right now, at the current rate, they get right at 72, 72% of it.
I think it's 153 million or...
Sounds right.
171 last fiscal year.
Our sales tax, the vast majority of it goes to Knox County schools, and it was 171 the last fiscal year.
$171 million that were given to the Knox County school system from the local option sales tax that we do, that we cannot use for projects, but we give to the school system. And I know one of the comments I've gotten from...
Local option sales tax that is collected within the city.
Right.
Again, it's at 72, roughly 28% split. We keep 28, they get 72.
Okay, my time is up, so I'll take a pause.
Okay, Councilmember Parker and then Roberta.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I have a couple of issues, obviously, with this proposed tax increase. The first is the process. You know, I've been very engaged in our budgeting process and wanting it to involve more of the public, wanting it to be more participatory, brought a resolution before council so that we can adjust our budget calendar, and I appreciate y'all's support on that so that we could have more time to engage with our constituents as we considered the budget and the revenue and spending projections that were coming before us, be able to communicate those with our community members. And I've spent a lot of time holding community meetings and workshops and discussing financial projections for the next few years, things that we just learned in a budget retreat. And then, you know, was caught off guard when I learned, I actually, I got a heads, I was in a meeting and I got a heads up from someone who said, the city's having a press conference today. What's that about? I don't know, nobody's told me. And then I watched the press conference to see what it was about, and that's how I learned about the proposed tax increase. So now I'm trying to play catch up. And how it works, when, you know, city council is a part-time job, for me, I dedicate a lot of hours during the budget process. So May, sometime in April leading up to May, I dedicate a whole lot of time. And then after that process is over, I got to go back and dedicate a lot of time to my other job that pays me. And so to be asked to change my whole schedule in June was, first of all, not appreciated. But also, I just don't think it's the best way to do things. Because already, since this proposal has come before us, we've already learned things about it that aren't necessarily the case. You know, what we learned recently about, what was it, diapers or baby formula or some costs that we thought were going to be exempt, but they're not going to be. And so it's evidence of a rushed process that, you know, puts council members in a place where we don't have all of the information to have an informed discussion with our constituents. What I have asked for since this proposal has come out is for us to have a budget retreat, not a one-on-one meeting, not an hour-long, even two-hour-long workshop, but a budget retreat where we are talking about six-year projections for revenue, for spending. So we're not only talking about that 47 million, but we're talking about a proposed tax increase in relationship to the spending that we already do as a city. Because some of the questions that I've had come to me are, well, what will be the priorities of the, you know, the regular budget? What will be the spending priorities outside of the 47 million? What can we anticipate being prioritized moving forward? Will the commitment to the 47 million make that the top priority? So if funding is short in other areas, we might reduce spending in other areas so that we can meet these goals we've set for this, how we're going to use the sales tax increase. Questions that constituents have about, you know, these pretty rosy revenue projections that we've been hearing about. When I asked about discussions around personnel costs and how are we going to cover personnel costs? Because my understanding is that still, the property tax increase that we passed will not cover our personnel costs fully in fiscal year '28. And when I'm asked, how are we going to make up the difference? I've been told, well, it's our strong sales tax and other revenues that are coming in. But we're not talking about committing any of that sales tax revenue towards those increasing personnel costs and the additional compensation study that's being discussed as happening. I have more there, but my time's up, so I'll pause.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberta.
Thank you, Mayor. This decision is not one I take lightly. In an economic climate where every dollar matters, asking our citizens to contribute more requires a compelling and well-justified need. Although the details were released on short notice, these projects are needed and deserve the opportunity for the voters to weigh in. As there's no other path that leads to getting these needs addressed for our city, I'm going to be voting yes and letting the voters decide on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith.
I think Councilwoman Fugit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You know, oh, yeah. Councilmember Fugit, you haven't had, we'll come back to Vice Mayor Smith.
I know, but I wanted to hear the end of his story, and I will. All I was going to say about this is taxes are hard. Nobody likes raising taxes. For me, this is about letting the citizens who come speak to city council month after month, year after year, wanting things done that only government can do. Nobody else builds a sidewalk but the city. Nobody, you know, in existing places. Yes, you can attach it to new development, some new developments do that, but in existing neighborhoods, the city builds the sidewalks. Parks, maintenance, all those things are what people expect their city tax dollars to go to. We have, in the budget, committed to some of those projects already. Again, this is just to accelerate, and citizens can decide whether it's worth it to them or not. But we've heard it, I've been on council five and a half years, going on six, this is a continual theme of wanting more infrastructure that we need. And, you know, I've gotten the question, well, we said the city's in good financial shape. Well, it's got a good rating, we're paying our bills, we're not borrowing money to make payroll, our pension is fine, is doing okay, but we don't want to get to a position where the only way to do some of these things is to get in a bad financial situation because you're doing them ahead of keeping your budget sound. These were the extra things, which is why they don't get funded every year, because we're prioritizing a good financial rating and making sure that we take care of employees and people that do the city services. This is a lot to take in. Again, I'm not the mayor. Would I pick the priorities she's picked? Would I pick the priorities council people have picked? Would I pick every priority a citizen has picked? No. This is the way government works. You, people are asked their opinions, you put a budget together, and in the end, in the sum... You, people are asked their opinions, you put a budget together, and in the end, in the sum vote, do you think, as a citizen, this is worth doing an accelerated race, at an accelerated pace? You can find something you don't like in any of it. So I don't like raising taxes, I won't be raising the tax. The citizens of Knoxville will vote and decide if they want to raise the sales tax in order to accomplish what they say they want done in their city.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And on that note, I think unlike property taxes, I think this is another kind of compelling reason that the voters will get to decide whether these investments make sense to them or not. And one of the things that's been clear to me is that people of any income will, have, have raised to me that they're willing to pay something for particularly sidewalks. So there's a couple of comments made I want to just clarify, either with Mr. DeBose or maybe somebody else on staff. This $50 million over the five years for housing is in addition to the Affordable Housing Fund commitment, correct?
Correct.
Which is $5 million a year, so this is over and above. And specifically, I think it is for permanent supportive housing, NOAA's senior housing, the things that we outlined here, right? Okay, thank you for that. And I don't see any projects, particularly in the 6th district, because that includes downtown. There's no sidewalks, greenways, or any of the facilities or parks in downtown on this list. Is that correct, Mr. Bray?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. These are really about neighborhoods outside of downtown because a lot of our resources through incentives have gone to downtown.
Not to disappoint Mr. Zing, but just, these are all kind of out-of-downtown investments, right? We've got a thriving downtown, and so this is not for tourists. In fact, this, all of the tourists that do come downtown will be paying for half of this. The last part I was going to, comment I was going to make is about accountability. I think Councilwoman Singh made a comment around, is this still kind of fluid? And is there still room for input? Whatever list we decide on, or this council approves, if it approves, I'm of the opinion we should bring forward some teeth to it. So either through resident, resolution or ordinance that codifies that this is a commitment, this is the list, it will get done in five years, and there will be some accountability to it. That's one of the things that I've heard from every person I've spoken with about this is, right or, yes or no, they want a commitment that this, what this is for, and not a year from now, change your priorities, etch a sketch, and start over. So I think, I look forward to bringing something to that effect to this council, and hopefully I'll have your support.
Thank you. I'm not sure which of you was the first, Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Smith, no disrespect, but I don't disregard my downtown residents. We've got over 2,000-plus people who live downtown, so. And however, we do have a lot of tourists that come through our city, whether we're the destination or they're on their way somewhere else, whether it's Dollywood or somewhere in North Carolina or the mountains, Yerlenburg. But I wanted to also bring up, because this is one that I get quite a bit, and I know that it's been backlogged for a while, and that's traffic calming, which is around when we talk about sidewalks, about community safety. The traffic calming, because speeding is an issue, what I have learned over the years, especially when I was younger, speeding is a habit. And I think that most people, if we were honest with ourselves, would agree to that. It's easy to speed and not even realize it. And so the traffic calming is also included in this. So it's also stated here that that would be part of our five-year commitment would be to get all the traffic calming requests that we have in place. And then also, I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but I know that there have been some instances where there have been requests for traffic calming, but they're main thoroughfares, and I, my understanding was that those were not appropriate because it does slow down the response rate for ambulances and fire.
Well, I think, I know our firefighters and so forth, we can't have speed humps on certain major arteries, but I know on Central Street, we did it in Magnolia, there's like, you know, streetscape projects which do end up slowing people down, those are quite expensive. But there are ways, there are many ways to calm traffic. Some are appropriate for neighborhood roads, some are appropriate for larger routes. But, but yeah, there's certain places where, due to emergency response needs, that you can't put in traffic humps, for example. Is that, Ms. Baldwin, did you have anything to add? Yeah, okay.
And so, and I very often have to remind people of that because in the case of a certain medical emergency such as heart attacks, every second counts. So just wanted to add that. And I am of the opinion that the voters of the city should make the determination as to whether or not this is what they want, rather than council, in my opinion, making that decision for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, I actually, I agree with you, I really like that idea that before we have the second reading, that we have a very clear list of what you are voting for your money to go to. Are you in support of that or not? I like that piece. But there's also the piece that I worry about is the times that we were in, that we're in right now. And I want to have space enough for us to pivot if, let's say, we lose a whole lot of funding that we really need that's much more humanitarian. I know as a city, we have certain responsibilities and it's, you know, the maintenance and roads and traffic calming. But if there was extreme times, I want space for us to be able to use this for, for that.
Councilmembers, I'd just say I totally agree with your sentiments, and would be glad to work with Vice Mayor Smith to develop a resolution along those lines for your consideration before second reading. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to wrap up what I was talking about earlier, there's really, you know, two or three overarching reasons why I don't support sending this to the ballot. And one is that what I'm hearing from constituents is concern about the cost of living. I'm not hearing about, you know, a push to prioritize the spending that the city has lifted up under this tax increase. I'm hearing about concerns about the cost of living, wanting to be able to enjoy their city, have access to free activities, you know, not have to worry about wrestling with these new parking things that they're having to deal with all over town. This is what's coming to me. In addition, what I, what I've lifted up earlier with the personnel costs that we haven't even discussed, I'm concerned that we're over-promising to the community, and so I don't feel comfortable signing off on this plan and being able to assure residents that this is the plan moving forward or the plan that should move forward, considering all of the other funding priorities that the budget will need to address, and we haven't had a thorough discussion of how, you know, the budget will be prioritized outside of this 47 million during this timeframe. And then also, if, if spending is to be codified, then it would need to really be codified. And we have a good example with the Affordable Housing Fund that has codified some spending for us over the last couple of years towards affordable housing. But if we're lifting this up to voters, I would, I would lift up the charter amendment that former Mayor Victor Ash brought forward for money for the parks. That's still in our, I think it expired just this last fiscal year, that would allow voters to say, you know, should the city prioritize spending, you know, whatever, whatever the language is, 50 million over the next five years on these five categories? So that the public can let you know whether sidewalks and paving and et cetera, et cetera, are what they consider the spending priorities for this tax increase. So that, I'm unfortunately not able to support this, but I do recognize that some of the infrastructure upgrades that are needed, the work that we continue to need to do to address city salary issues, it's going to put some pressure on our budget, and we're going to have to find new revenue streams, and we're limited in this state. So it's a conversation that we've got to have. I don't like the way we're going about it right now. I don't feel that the urgency is there, you know, going into the budget process. We were talking about our concerns with inflation, we were talking about our concerns with some of our partners in the community who might lose funding or who had lost funding, and different services that were going to be potentially cut. Now we're hearing about CAC possibly cutting staff and the impact it's going to have on their community centers around the city. And it's my opinion that these are services, just like we heard from Cherokee Health this morning, they want to partner with the city to expand and expand because the need is there. If we're, if we don't partner, if we don't find ways to partner, then our community members go without needed services, and issues arise that we as cities have to address in other ways. And quite often, that tends to be that well-funded law enforcement that we call to address these issues. So I am in disagreement that our spending priority needs to be sidewalks. I think in the, in this time that we're in right now, with all of the pressures that our communities are feeling, we have a much greater responsibility to our community. And we're doing our communities a disservice when we don't talk about the breadth of responsibilities that we have in this moment beyond road paving.
Thank you. Singh, no further lights on? All those in favor, please say aye.
There's no motion.
Oh, there's no motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion? Would someone like to propose a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, I just want to say, there's a lot of voters who have asked to vote on this, and so I support putting on the ballot to let people vote on it. That is the choice of the voter, of the voters. This is, Mr. Evans, oh, there you are. What is our, our total budget? It's.
477.
477.
That's the total net budget, yes, 477.
Okay, what's the total without the double-counted? Yada, yada, yada.
It's over half a billion. Hang on a second. I've got it right here.
What do we spend, Mr. Evans?
We, we spend 477.
Okay, thank you.
That, that is, the net budget just gets you out of all the inter-fund charges and stuff.
That's annual, that's annual. I just want to clarify that if, you know, we're talking about five buckets, and one of those buckets being sidewalks for a half a cent is what we're discussing, that is not the priority being sidewalks, it is adding sidewalks into the mix. If 477 million is the annual budget, and we're talking about 47 million dollars spread over five years, Mr. Evans, you're a little faster with the numbers there, so that's 47 divided by five. No, I'm talking, the 47 million.
47 million additional dollars per year, that's per year.
Okay, it's per year.
See, you say 47 million times five.
But it's a percent of, it's like 10%.
It's a percentage of the 47 million.
Of the 477 million, it'd be on top of that. Correct? The current expenditures are 477 million. This would be an additional 47 million per annum with a prioritized list that we're talking about. And just to clarify, there was a conversation about codifying or nailing down the list. Are we talking about codified or resolution?
I think I heard resolution.
I'm going to work with Vice Mayor Smith and see, in the law department, and see what is the recommendations are.
Okay, because it needs to be clear to people what they're voting for. And then the other question, Mr. Evans, the half-cent sales tax is the equivalent of how much? What would, what would it take in property sales tax increase to reach the same number?
It actually comes, I'll look that up.
I think it's 60 cents equivalent.
Just, yeah, it's like 61, 61 cents is what it is. So just over 60 cents.
Okay, thank you.
That would be from what we've got right now, you'd have to go up a whole 61 cents to get that.
And by comparison, the property tax increase that you all approved in 2022 was 36 cents.
36 and a half cents, that's correct.
It was 36 and a half cents, but then the tax rate was adjusted back down due to equalization.
It was 50 cents, and then it was adjusted back down.
No, we went to 1.7902 per hundred dollars of assessed value. Then we did a 36 and a half cent raise from that equalization rate, brought us up to 2.1556. What you're just asked was, so what would this, to get this another 47 million, you would have to say 2.1556 plus .61, and take it up to what that brings you to.
And I'll just say that our operating budget is in excellent condition, and the city's priorities haven't changed. Our number one priority is public safety, public safety is job one, that is super important. We invest a lot in KPD, we invest a lot in the fire, we invest a lot in community, community safety and empowerment for, you know, first time ever, that's never been done before, but thanks to this council, you know, honoring the needs of our city, we've made significant investments in that. The other thing, the other, the next priority is enhancing healthy and connected communities, clean and resilient future, thriving businesses and good jobs, and high-quality, efficient city services. I mean, those are steady, they're not changing. And this proposal reflects unmet needs that we haven't been able to fund to meet our growing community's needs. And I, I have to just reiterate, the number one concern I hear from people is about the need for more affordable housing. And this proposal would add a significant amount, 10 million dollars annually, to help address those needs in permanent supportive housing, in gap financing, in addressing homelessness, particularly in our most acute needs among youth experiencing homelessness and veterans experiencing homelessness. And that's been a huge need that we have heard, and it hasn't abated. But this is one other way to address that need, in addition to the commitments that we've already made. Councilmember Singh?
I hear what Ms. Parker is saying, and I agree with a lot of it. You know, what it reminded me of was, there was a survey being done many, many years ago, and we were talking about sidewalks. And this isn't, I know this is not all about sidewalks, there are essential things in here that are important. But I remember the sentiment about sidewalks were two different things. One, we want sidewalks so we can have a nice after-dinner walk. The other one was, we need nice sidewalks so we're not tripping when we're getting shot at. It's like really different realities, right? That's what came to my mind. But I do think the monies that we're putting in for community facilities, that that's something that's needed, the affordable housing pieces needed, traffic calming that's based on West, near West High School, that's going to save some lives. That was some pretty serious creative ingenuity done there. So there are things that are essential for life, more than just quality of life for people who are doing well. But I'm going to abstain until the next meeting because I want to see where, with this resolution, if we do get into humanitarian crisis, we need to shift our focus. So I want to see what we can work on together.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Singh, and all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Got that? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
12 T is an ordinance to exempt the retail sale of food and food ingredients from the increase in the local option sales tax rate adopted by the City of Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, we have two people signed up to speak on this item. First is in favor, Judith Pilo. Ms. Pilo, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Good evening, I'm Judith Pilo, 2247 Western Avenue. I'm the Director of Nutrition Services at CAC. And I just want to thank you for. And I just wanna thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak regarding proposed tax increase, exemption on grocery items. In the past twelve months, Mobile Meals has served one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six older adults here in our community. And the majority of those, over a thousand of those, live on a very limited income, most of them under the fifteen-thousand-dollar rate. As you can see, majority of older adults that we serve are strapped to pay for housing, food prescriptions, utilities, and other basic needs out of a very tight monthly budget. Exempting groceries from this tax increase would help the older adults of our community stretch their very limited dollars for purchasing food that they need beyond the Mobile Meal. Since groceries are a major recurring expense for most households, exempting groceries from the tax increase will shield those households, especially those on low and fixed incomes, from additional financial strain, keeping food items affordable. More affordable food items allows people to purchase the needed quantity and the quality that they need to stay healthy. We at Mobile Meals are fortunate to have community partners and local organizations that help us provide supplemental groceries to our clients that are struggling to have enough food each week. Some of them get it weekly, some of us call, some call monthly and just say, "I don't have enough food for the month. Can you help me to get me to the next social security payment?" And if those costs of groceries continue to rise, I'm very concerned that our clients, that we won't be able to continue to meet that need. So we wanna make sure that we try to keep our grocery costs low, exempting, using the exemption on food as part of this tax increase. And I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next person signed up to speak in opposition to item twelve T is Nzinga Amani.
There might be some people confused right now is why I'm speaking in opposition to this. So grocery exemption and sales tax, just that alone does not make this less progressive. This is actually pretty common. You even see this in right-wing and Republican cities will have an exemption for sales tax, right? So I think, you know, one thing that is missing here is the sentiment of our city government. What's missing is the sentiment of our city government to actually look after all of its residents here, especially residents I'm dealing with, systems of oppression, right? I remember when I was running for office and some folks who talked to me was like, "Hey, you talked about, you know, taxes and wanted to tax people." And I have to say like, hey, like, you know, like, first of all, I wanted to find ways to tax the rich, not working class, right? But when it comes to, when it comes to having to raise some taxes, inevitably having a commitment to saying, "We're gonna have as little burden as possible for working-class and poor residents," right? And if we're not able to put as much exemptions as necessary in there, to have alternative funds for people to reach out to if they need, right? I think that is completely reasonable. I don't think it takes, you don't necessarily have to be a Marxist to believe that, right? So we wanna see a sales tax that actually prioritizes the working-class and poor people. So exhausting every single way to do that, right? So it's a way to have zip code exemptions, right? So some zip codes of lower income don't have to pay this sales tax. Can we also include over-the-counter medicines? Can we include clothes? Can we include infant and childcare products? What about reproductive care products, right? And again, what about having some more funds for people to reach out to when they need help for the expenses, right? So if you would've had significant community engagement, and Lauren Ryder, you mentioned one of the studies, I think you mentioned maybe it was the sidewalk study before and all the robust community engagement. I think you'd also need to understand that the city has a systemic problem of not having community engagement that reaches out to working-class people, to poor people, to black and brown people, right? It's the same people, typically homeowners, right, who are participating in these community engagement processes, who have their voices heard. Meanwhile, some of the real people who have faced most of the impacts are completely left out the process. So if you would've had that sort of process, you would've gotten more ideas as far as like, what are exemptions that make sense? Because just a grocery exemption, this still keeps us of aggressive, heavily aggressive tax, right? So I'm not sure what is legally possible in this state of Tennessee that is controlled by fascists who hate public spending, who hate social services, right? Who outlawed income tax, right? I know there's lots of, yeah, it's real, it's real in Tennessee, you know? So we all understand, we all understand that we have growing needs and the city needs to be spending more and more on the, to help this residents out, right? But still, nonetheless, we need the city taking every single avenue possible to reduce the tax burden on poor and working-class people. This isn't enough. I hope y'all find more ways to do it. And you can also push this back, figure out some more answers, and then push it to the voters. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmembers, that concludes the people who have signed up to speak to this item. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you, or maybe Mr. Swanson, address what is allowed and why this was chosen as the exemption?
Yeah, we definitely carefully vetted what state law allows and doesn't allow. And it does, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ball or Mr. Swanson, we are allowed to exempt groceries as defined by the state. We're not allowed to exempt anything else. That's the state law, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Ryder?
I just wanna, we discussed this at the workshop and I just wanna be clear, for anyone who didn't watch the workshop, although Vice Mayor Smith said, "Please go, use CTV and watch it." We talked about that. And for anybody that wants to look it up and what the limitations are, it's food and food ingredients, not grocery. We keep calling it grocery 'cause that's the common thinking. But it's defined by the state as food and food ingredients and we are not allowed to add and pick and choose what goes into that and what doesn't. Is that correct, Mr. Swanson?
That's correct.
Are we allowed to, are there other categories and definitions of things that could be exempted?
No, and we are totally bounded by state law with regard to what exemptions we can allow.
And we are bounded by state law? We can't do an income tax?
That's correct.
Okay, so we can't tax the rich and we can't exempt other things? So, Mr. Evans, in terms of, just to kinda digress a little bit, we've lost other revenue sources too. We had the hall tax for a long time. So that's one thing that we lost out of the mix. What was the high for the hall tax, kind of in your time here? I'm thinking twenty-something mil annually?
No, ma'am, the highest I ever saw it come in was like, it was either eleven point five or eleven point seven million.
Okay, all right. And then it dwindled down to about five million 'cause it got a phase out?
I've seen it go as low as like, two and a half. It was impossible.
At the end, during the phase out?
Well, no, just then, I've seen it in, when times were great and they weren't phasing out. It was one of those things you could just never predict. Mr. York, my predecessor, used to just go nuts over that. You couldn't pin it down.
So we couldn't use it as a budgeting tool 'cause it was all over the place?
Not really. I mean, you knew you were probably gonna get something, but you sure didn't know how much.
But it was a removed revenue source, so...
It was like a boon that you would get in maybe the mid, the FY. And usually you use it on capital. No, we do not get that anymore.
Okay, so we're pretty much limited to property tax and local option sales tax?
Property taxes are largest source of revenue. It is obviously our most stable. And, you know, local option sales tax is our second-largest source of revenue. Now, it's a little more volatile 'cause it's market-driven, but it is our second-largest every year.
Okay, and just real quick, 'cause I did not finish that conversation earlier. The local option sales tax, we're required to give fifty percent? The minimum to the school system is fifty percent?
But only when it's adopted by the entire county?
That's correct.
Explain to me what you mean by that.
Okay, so if this is approved by you all and goes on the ballot and the City of Knoxville voters approve it, the increment, the half-cent increment would go a hundred percent to the City of Knoxville?
Okay.
But the current sales tax, which has already been adopted countywide, we're required by state law to give fifty...
The two-point-two-five.
The two-point-two-five, that's currently the status quo. Fifty percent of that is the minimum required by state law that has to go to public schools. We give an additional twenty-two percent due to a series of arrangements and so forth that... So we go above and beyond the state minimum. I'm proud of that. This would not affect that commitment. And we wanna continue to support our public schools. This proposal would in no way affect our support for Knox County Public Schools.
Okay, and our current share in the current budget for that seventy-two percent?
The seventy-two twenty-eight percent would still be in effect for everything.
For the two-point-two-five?
As it is right now. That fifty basis points, we would be going up if the voters choose to do that. That would be split between, well, if the county didn't join, it would get a hundred percent. If the county did join, it'd be a fifty-fifty split.
Of that half-cent?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor Smith, or Councilmember Singh?
Two questions. One, we talked about it earlier today, I believe. Somebody asked me the question, the two-point-two-five that we already have as a local option, can we exempt groceries, food and food ingredients, from that? Can you talk about the county's part about?
State law, since it's been adopted by the county, it would have to be a county-wide decision to start exempting that.
And would that be a valid initiative or...?
Not by the city. I mean, not by the city voters. The Knox County Commission would have to propose that kind of initiative.
The County Commission could make...
And I get, you know, all I know is that it's not something that we have the authority to decide, to take, to undo what has been done in the past without a lot of process and a lot of county and state matters, so...
I just wanted to say that out loud. Two, right now, the, Mr. White, I think you were saying about sixty-five or sixty million is what we collected last year in, from the two-point-two-five?
Sixty-six million from the two-point-two-five local option.
And then we have, it's actually the state that collects it and charges us a fee and then gives back a portion of it?
Yeah, and they remit it to the county and the county then provides us our cut.
Are they changing the amount of cut they're taking? Is that a way that we'll get back a little bit more than we were before?
I know we've been, I know our state legislature has been working on that sum. I have not got any hard numbers in front of me as to whether something like that has gone through and if so, what it might be.
So that's not really on the table right now to discuss?
No, it's nothing, nothing I'm planning on in any budget, I can tell you that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith is, no, okay. Yeah, would you please close that door? So we're hearing a lot of extra noise. Councilmember Ryder?
So I just wanna follow up with Councilwoman Singh just asked if someone from the administration or Ms. McAnally is here. That was on the budget, or that was in the legislative agenda this past year, but it did not pass, is that correct?
Correct.
To try and stop taking that cut and charging us for giving us our money back? Okay.
That's my understanding, yes. And Ms. McAnally's not in.
'Cause that's a longstanding thing where they charge us a service fee?
Yeah, they're charging us fees based on manual labor that's no longer required because we have computers.
Right, okay, cool, awesome.
It was allegedly gonna appear in the budget of the state, but I don't recall having seen that or heard anything about it, so...
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, just a point of clarity. With this exemption, the, back to the website on the city, the city's website about household impact, just to clarify, the, still, the estimated monthly impact to the lowest-income family is still five dollars a month, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ryder?
Mr. Evans or someone can ask one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
So not only does the state take a cut, is it true that the trustee's office also takes a cut for service handling of us getting our local option sales tax money back?
I think so.
And so...
I'm not one-hundred percent sure. It's been a long time since I looked into that.
It has been said to me that in the past, like, Mr. Shumpert did not, but other trustees have chosen to do that?
Again, I'm, we're talking on back there.
Maybe we can get some answers to that. That's just interesting. Thank you.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, 'cause we keep emphasizing, you know, what this half-a-cent tax increase would actually look like for people. I just wanted to emphasize that five dollars a month for someone who lives paycheck to paycheck is a big deal. And I know it may seem like, oh, it's, you know, it's not that big a deal. But man, when you're, when you're paycheck to paycheck. And I had an experience recently that reminded me of this 'cause I was talking to someone. But what happens is, you know, you have a bill that comes due. It's fifty-nine dollars. You don't have the full fifty-nine dollars. So now your bill's late until you can get that fifty-nine dollars. Now you got a late fee that you gotta pay on top of that. So it's, you know, we say, oh, it's just a little bit increase for folks. But sometimes that small increase can push folks over that line. They've just been like treading water. Now they can't make that monthly bill as easily. Now they got late fees they have to deal with. Now they gotta get a service turn back on. Now they gotta, and that's what it's like to be poor. You get one thing that piles on and then another thing piles on and it's all, it just all piles on. So obviously, I'm not in support of this, but I am in support of us addressing revenue concerns in our city, which we have limited options to do. But as we do that, I want us to think about ways that we can support our low-income community members through that process. When we passed the property tax increase, we applied for some sort of funding support from the state that would have allowed us to provide some sort of grants to individuals in the community to offset some of the impact that was gonna have on folks. And I can't remember what that, what that funding request was. I don't believe we've got it 'cause we don't have a new program. But we need programs like that in place. I agree with the speaker from earlier. It's, we can budget ahead for some of these things and put in place, you know, some sort of support fund that our community can tap into to help address some of their increased living expenses that results from an increased sales tax. So instead of us making ourselves feel better by feeling like, you know, it's gonna have a smaller impact than we might think, let's start thinking about ways that we can support community members who are barely holding on. And just in case voters do adopt this in, I guess it's in November because it looks like it's going on the ballot, that's what I would push for.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah. I just wanted to say, I don't disagree with Councilwoman Parker for looking for ways to supplement and we do do that. And I, I know, there are definitely people in my life personally who live paycheck to paycheck, social security check to social security check. to paycheck, social security check to social security check. And so I understand what it's like to not have that money. I know people wouldn't believe that, I personally would know, but I do. My dad lived off of $600 and some change every month. The only difference for him is he had a piece of property that most times had a lien, and he was at threat of losing. And the difference is, he had me to turn to, because I got lucky and made something where I could help him pay his bills. So I know what it's like to have someone in my life that didn't have any money to even feed themselves. So I don't take this vote lightly, but here's what I'm gonna say. It seems like it's just sidewalks. But when 640 was put in place, when the 640 expansion up between Fountain City and Lower Broadway was put in place, for anybody that's up there, there was a beet-worn path in the grass, in the dirt, from North Gate Towers to the Food City. That's how people went and bought their groceries. And our engineering department, some of them are still with us and some of them are previous employees, argued with the state to not take out the ability to walk to the grocery store. And the, and I'm sorry that I'm going down this path, but T.DOT took away the ability to walk to the damn grocery store. And so all these people living paycheck to paycheck in, in public housing had no way. So we took care of that, we voted, we put those sidewalks in. But the thing is, is, Mr. Rosenberg, you sent me a corrected number, the sidewalk study totals was 2.5 million dollars, I don't know where he's at. We have 2.5 million dollars of sidewalks that are unfunded and unbuilt to get people, is, you wanna correct my number?
Closer to 2 billion, with a B.
2 billion, not 2 and a half billion.
I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to shortchange it, because we might be able to come up with 2 million in sidewalks. But these are routes that people need to walk to the grocery store, and they're routes that people need to walk to school. And those are critical needs for people, and we're limited by what we can do. And they take a cut of what we already take in, and then other people take their cut. And until there are things and changes at the state level to fund, we have very few options to be able to give people routes to the grocery store and routes to the schools. So I don't take it lightly, but I want people to be able to get to the grocery store, and I commend the staff for finding a way for the people from North Gate Towers to be able to get to that Food City. But we made a new way for them to get there. But we made a new way for them to get there, because the state wouldn't give it to us. So, you know, we, 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 we have to provide infrastructure for people to get there, and we may not see eye to eye about which parts of the budget to cut and pick from to make it happen, but this is an option, this is something that people ask for, and so that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments, we do have a motion to approve on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Let's take a nine-minute break and reconvene at 8:40, please. Okay, council, we've, we've had our recess, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Members of the audience, we're resuming our meeting, so if you could take your seats or take your conversations outside. Okay. Phone's ringing. Okay, looks like one, two, three, four, five, so we have a quorum. This meeting, recess is over, the meeting is resumed. Hey, members of the audience, please take your seats. Go ahead.
12 U is an ordinance to close a portion of an unnamed alley adjacent to City Block 064, excuse me, 06040, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Parker?
It seems that the listing for these items has changed, and we're now listing City Block rather than the roads and intersections.
Mr. Johnson, did you change something with how you did it, or I don't?
No, ma'am, this was submitted by the engineering department.
Mr. Claybo, is there some change in that? Can you speak to that?
We discussed that, that's how the applications come in, from, the applications are received by planning, and so the resolutions are based on the application. We, we can, in the future, try to use some descriptors. I, I did do that in my email to council to try to help pinpoint exactly where it's at, but we can, we can try to do a better job of describing it.
I, I would appreciate that, I think it's better for the public's understanding of the agenda item.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ryder?
I'd just say, Mr. Claybo, it's down in the background, so I think the issue is it's just not in the AIS, in the caption.
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Right? But it's in the background?
It is.
In the first, so, okay, all right. So it just needs to be in both places.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12 V is an ordinance to close an unnamed alley within City Block 09248, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12 W is an ordinance to close a portion of Heinz Street between City Blocks 09245 and 09265, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12 X is an ordinance to close a portion of Henna Avenue between City Blocks 09248 and 09265, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12 Y is an ordinance to close, or rather, is an ordinance, consideration of an amendment to the Knoxville, Knoxville City Code, Appendix B, Zoning Code, Article 9.3J, to include the conversion of an existing building to a two-family dwelling in, in the principal use standards for a two-family dwelling Knoxville-Knoxville County planning applicant, all districts.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion?
This, I'm, I'm just confused with the wording of the caption.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
12 Z is an ordinance approving their request of Amy Sherrill for an amendment to the West City Sector Plan from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential for property located at 4301 and 4311 Kingston Pike, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, Second District.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Roberto?
Mayor, has anyone signed up to speak on the next three items?
No.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to combine items Z, AA, and AB.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to consolidate the next three agenda items, has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to consolidate, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to consolidate carries. As there, now a motion to approve the consolidated motion, I guess, carries forward.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion to approve and has been made and seconded. Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Is Amy Sherrill here?
Ms. Sherrill, Amy Sherrill, are you present? There you are, okay. I think Councilmember Roberto may have some questions for you.
I just wanted to ask, I, I know this involves the Knoxville Montessori School there on Kingston Pike, and I just wanted to ask you, you know, what are the plans that you're, you're going through with this, this re-zoning?
If you could activate the microphone and state your name and address for the record first.
Yes, it's Amy Sherrill, 902 North Central Street. We have been working with the Montessori School to look at opportunities for expanding their educational facility. And in that, looking at how, you know, while we don't have a finite plan of what that will be, knowing that the zoning of what it is now does not support future growth for a number of reasons. One of the primary things that we're looking here is the second structure of being able, you know, they've done a great job of utilizing the structures that existed on those properties, and there are difficulties with expanding upon them. And so a second primary structure is one of the primary things that we're aiming for in this, so that they could add another building. Accessory building wouldn't allow them to use that as an educational facility.
Okay. And what I wanted to also, I just wanted to get a sense for, you know, what was going on, make sure I understood what, what you were doing. The, it's really what we're talking about is an expansion there on Kingston Pike for the Montessori School, and that you need to be able to have two buildings, not just one on the property.
Correct.
Okay. And I also wanted to, to thank you for, I know when this was initially brought up, it was looking at making this a commercial property, but instead you're moving to, you know, staying in residential, and I thought that was a really good move for you all as well, going from RN1 to RN3. And I think that's really in concert with what you see in that area, so I wanted to tell you how much I appreciated that compromise.
Well, and I, I will reflect that to the community as well, because that actually came from a very thoughtful discussion with some community members there in Sequoia Hills, so.
And I just appreciate you doing that and having those conversations and coming to that, to that agreement. So I, I appreciate it, I, I'm gonna go ahead and approve it.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. That pretty much answered my question, I was confused by the residential zoning, and now I understand, so thank you so much.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12 AC is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 1501 North Cherry Street from IG District to CH1 District, Bahun Singh applicant, Sixth District.
Second.
Okay, motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Singh?
I'm not related to this person, so I'm gonna vote.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12 AD is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 1203 Murray Drive from RN1 District to RN5 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Savannah Reyes Dixon applicant, Third District.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12 AE is an ordinance approving their request of Belvin Properties LLC for an amendment to the South City Sector Plan from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential for property located at 700 Gertrude Avenue, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, First District.
Okay, councilmembers, we have one person signed up to speak in favor of this item, Ellen Saviska. Ms. Saviska, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council. Your mic, please turn the mic on. There you go.
Okay, thank you. God forbid you couldn't hear me. Ellen Saviska, 3118 Fairview Street. I'll be very brief, here to speak on behalf of Yes Knoxville. We are a nonprofit that supports more housing opportunities and choices, more transportation choices, and great public spaces in our city. I wanted to speak in favor of this project, because while it is a small one, every additional housing unit in our city is that much less sprawl into the county. It's also more housing that's close to jobs, stores, other destinations, allows people to make shorter trips, allows people to make trips on transit, walking, cycling, in ways that are more sustainable than driving alone, or even if driving alone, it's still shorter, shorter time in the car. Infill housing and adding gentle density to our neighborhoods is one of the most effective steps that we can take to reduce climate emissions, in addition to, of course, creating more housing opportunities and choices for our neighbors. So that's why we support this, and we hope you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes the people who signed up to speak to this item. Vice Mayor Smith?
Mayor, just a point of order here, Mr. Nab, are you here? Yeah, I saw you come up. Is Mr. Land here as well? Okay, Mr. Nab signed up to speak to the next item. I think he wanted to speak to this item since it was first, and so I'm gonna suspend the, make a motion to suspend the rules to allow him to speak to this item. Correct me if I'm wrong, you would like to speak to this?
If necessary, absolutely. I'm here to answer, I'm sorry, other question. I'm here to answer any questions, basically.
Okay, so you don't have anything?
Oh, I do, I do have some comments, absolutely.
Okay. Councilmembers, any objections to letting him speak? He did sign up for AF.
I think you would prefer to sign, speak to this one, I just don't want him to miss the opportunity to speak, even though I think we're gonna disagree. I want him to have his chance to speak to this item now.
Okay, unless there's objections, we'll just allow that, okay? Mr. Nab, if you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you, absolutely. Steven Nab, 3212 Rolling Hills Lane, Knoxville, Tennessee. I'm the owner, I'm the owner of 700, my wife and I are the owner of 700 Gertrude Lane, a house that is currently rental, has been for about a decade. About a year ago, we were able to, thanks to the city, take an alley easement, and we were able to extend the property additional 25 feet, giving us about 100 feet of road frontage. My neighbor, this lot is currently RN2, and I made a zoning request initially for RN4. I don't do zoning requests a lot, and I should have probably initially asked for RN3. This is not a case of a pocket zoning. The house to the left of me, which Mr. Land owns, is zoned RN4. The property to the left of that is a apartment building that I believe is owned by Dominion. The property, and I, I have a little bit of paperwork if I can get it to y'all, just some pictures, map legend, and just gives you an idea.
Mr. Johnson will come get it for you, so you can continue speaking.
Absolutely, thank you. It just gives a visual representation of what's going on, on the street. The house, which I do have a, thank you, sir. The house, which I have a picture of, is a 1955 rancher, doesn't have any architectural interest. You'll see, it's just, it's a rectangle, it's not a craftsman, it's reaching end of life, and my wife and I would like to develop. And instead of doing a use-on-review in an RN2 and doing essentially a duplex or two-town homes, we thought it was worth the effort to apply and make, do a zoning change to get a triplex. So all this is basically about one extra unit. When I applied, I applied for RN4, which is what Zach Land's property is. And in the next 18 months, he's going to apply, and he's going to look to redevelop his property, which is currently a rental. The, the issue with RN4, I didn't realize this, when MPC looked at it, that would allow up to seven units. As a result, when people commented on that, rightfully so, there were two or three complaints saying, well, that's not an appropriate use, and I agree on that, no, no one could read my mind knowing what I actually wanted to do, which is just three units. At the MPC meeting, it was suggested by the commission that I change it from RN4 to RN3, which is then what the, the MPC meeting approved, and that's why I'm here. The two things I wanted to point out, or there, there's a few points. One, any structure that replaces the current home, I, I provided a representative picture, it is maybe 10 feet wider than the current house. So it's not gonna change the aesthetics of the neighborhood, it's not going to feel out of place, essentially. It's, it has a good aesthetic. The other things I wanted to note, I believe after the initial public concerns about it, I don't believe there's been any other concerns since, you know, since it's been discussed as an RN3, as a triplex or three-town homes, essentially. The, part of the rationale when I spoke to the MPC was, if you look across the street, the green, that's an acre, that's zoned industrial, everyone feels pretty confident that at some point that's going to be some type of higher-density development. Again, it was the MPC's opinion that what I was doing on Gertrude was appropriate. So the, the key things I just wanted to express is, whatever I build, it's gonna be harmonious with the neighborhood aesthetically. The other thing which surprised me, I looked at all the parcels on Gertrude, and I believe it's 84%, 84% of them are non-owner occupied. So that means they're essentially rentals or investment properties. So adding an additional two units to the street is not gonna change the, it's not gonna change the nature of the street, essentially, I'm not doing something that's, that's, that's different. And the other concern, I think, is, does this create a precedent which other people could try to take advantage of, at least on Gertrude? I would say it does create a precedent, but I think it would be hard to replicate. Part of my rationale was, my thoughts are ready on next to an RN4 lot, and other lots are not sized appropriately to scale up beyond a duplex.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Land, who'd also signed up for this item, is no longer present. He had to leave.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the people who signed up to these items. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, and I wanna compliment Mr. Nab. We had a conversation on the site and with Mr. Land about this, and so you were very transparent about what you wanted to do from the beginning, so cheer. and so you were very transparent about what you wanted to do from the beginning, so cheers to you for that. I think the, the thing that I mentioned to you there is kinda the reason that I don't support this, is that in isolation, this could be done in any of the properties on Gertrude. I don't know, Mr. Johnson, if you can pull this up on KGIS, but I wanted to show the map zoning view. Thank you. So if you'll highlight the property, Mr. Johnson, it is number three there, thank you. Yeah, so if you zoom out, all of the yellow is RN2, and so this would set a precedent. In fact, I've already spoken to one resident who heard about this and asked me, could they do it too next? So, it literally is a precedent set. And so, I also wanna go give Mr. Nab hope, and I think I mentioned this to you on the phone last week as well, is that the best way, and the neighbors around it are generally concerned about this precedent being set. The best way to consider more density in this area, by the way, is the comprehensive plan, which is about to start. So this council approved that, that body of work's about to begin. If that entire neighborhood, or that entire street of Gertrude, or that entire, that whole view there, wants to consider upzoning the whole area, the comprehensive plan provides an entire community support conversation for that, as opposed to one-off piecemeal upzoning, which is what this will do. And it is adjacent to RN4, but the property owner who's interested in doing this is not far down the street from you. So, I think the comprehensive plan is the place for that entire neighborhood to have this conversation about upzoning. But at this point, as I mentioned, I told Mr. Nab I would support, likely support whatever planning staff recommended. They recommended denial for very clear reasons. It's hemmed in by a railroad, there's no pedestrian street access along there, and it does set a precedent for what would follow. And I think the comprehensive plan gives a very, very unique opportunity, which is exactly why this council asked planning to prioritize that for the entire neighborhood, to have this dialogue together. So while Mr. Land does live beside you in the RN4, other residents on the next street and the next street up are concerned about the higher density moving from the South Waterfront, which is meant for density, on up the hill at Suzanne, and this would be the first kinda chipping away of that without a community-wide discussion, which is what the comprehensive plan is for. So, for that measure, for that reason, I won't be able to support it. And I think a lot of the arguments you make are good, but I think any property on Gertrude could make the same arguments, other than being beside Mr. Land, so. But I'll pause now and let other council members get questions answered.
I just wanna make one clear clarification, if possible.
Mr., you're not recognized. Just if someone has a question for you, they can ask, but otherwise, you can have a seat.
My apologies.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I agree with Councilperson Smith on his analysis here, and I'm looking at the planning staff recommendation. I studied that quite a bit before the meeting, and the criteria for the, the change is not met. I think it's pretty clear, I'm not gonna read it all, but it talks about no changing conditions. Subject lot is not aligned with intent of rezoning to accommodate medium-density residential development, could create traffic burden on surrounding narrow, disjointed street infrastructure. It would permit a scale and intensity of residential development that would be out of character with adjacent properties, and, and city engineering has indicated that Gertrude Avenue would need to be expanded to 20 feet width in order to accommodate a more intensive residential rezoning at this location. So I'm, I agree with the planning staff's recommendation, and I'm not gonna be able to support this rezoning either.
Councilmember Parker, and then Councilmember Ryder.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the planning staff's recommendation. I did reach out to one of the property owners on this street for their feedback, and what they said was, if our street was changed to medium-density, it wouldn't work well for our street. All of the homes are single-family with one or two functioning as duplexes. If it changed to medium-density, I imagine folks would be encouraged, maybe even poached, to sell. Houses would be leveled, and the three-story homes would go up all on our street. Many of the homes are rentals on our street, and they are still affordable. And the parking on the street is super limited. So, lots of concerns from property owners, and, and not wanting to start a trend that, that brought in these three-story homes on that small street. So I'm not able to support it either.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, just similar point, is that this is some of what we are now referring to as NOA, naturally occurring affordable housing. I don't know if I said that correctly, but anyway. I am never warmly embraced tearing down an affordable house to be able to build other things. So, Ms. Brooks, there are no, like, infill overlays, or in our, I'm not the right one, whatever Emerald Fairmont has, not a, this conservation, thank you.
No, there's not.
Okay, okay. And that's not something that's looked at as part of the comprehensive plan or anything that Vice Mayor Smith was referring to?
I mean, it could come out of conversations that are had as part of that effort.
I just think that that's one of the big dangers that we have, is we have lots of affordable, smaller homes, and people value the land and wanna tear down the homes. And unless we give types of conservation overlays to kinda protect those from going away, things like that continue to roll along. Thank you.
There's, is there a motion, or?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay, motion has been made to deny this rezoning. We're on AE, so, sorry, deny, a motion to deny. It's been made and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this denial, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion to deny carries eight-one. The next item, according to the lawyers, is moot. So, we don't need to discuss it, we can move right along. Correct? Yep, okay.
We're at public forum, ma'am. Yes, you're, you're not allowed to pass a zoning that's in opposition to a sector plan or a one-year plan. And that's what you would be doing, because the sector plan was not changed. So that's what makes it moot.
Okay, thank you. Council will move on to public forum. First person signed up to speak at public forum is Larry McAfee. Mr. McAfee, if you could start by stating your name and address for the record, you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Larry McAfee, 3333 Clivery Street, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37917. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, my wife Brittany, and Scott Dorcock. Thanks for joining. I come before you to address the current state of Knoxville Fire Department and the future. We're standing at a pivotal crossroads. The path we choose will have profound and lasting consequences for the current and future generations of firefighters. This decision will position our department for decades of success, or, if mishandled, years of speed bumps and setbacks. For this reason, the process must be free from political influences and personal agendas. Integrity and transparency must guide all interactions among the stakeholders. This plan will shape the decisions around personnel, equipment, facilities, training, and technologies, all of which are critically in need of modernization. The fire department, in many ways, is still operating under a 20th century plan. Our policies, procedures, and staffing levels have not been significantly updated since the late 90s and early 2000s, whereas the city's footprint has exponentially increased. While the man, while the demands on our department continue to rise, staffing levels and the number of fire stations have remained unchanged. Our firefighters are expected to meet increasing demands while the resources are in mounting pressure. It's simply unsustainable. American canning, members of council, both present and future elected officials, we need your support, politically and financially. To realize the city of Knoxville's vision as a model employer, your investment must be meaningful. This is not the time for symbolic gestures and half-measures. Real investments must be reflected in competitive compensation and working conditions provided. For instance, it is unacceptable that a city the size of Oak Ridge is only $3,000 behind us in starting pay. Our recruits, which are eager to start and serve, cannot even afford to live within the city limits. I have a question for everybody on this stage. Has any of you really considered subsidized housing for city employees, fire, police, and general government? Compensation-wise, humongous piece is not the only piece of the puzzle that is important. Facilities, equipment, and infrastructure needs are just as important to the safety of our job and for us to be effective. While I commend the city for getting us great apparatuses, our fire stations are aging and deteriorating. Our special operations division lack critical resources if we're hit with a major disaster in the city. And many of our public safety tools are outdated. These are not just fire department concerns, these are public safety concerns as well. These affect your residents. Furthermore, training and technologies must be brought into the 21st century. When someone dies 911, they're probably having the worst day of their life, and they're expecting us to be on our A-game. They deserve a top-notch response. Year after year, the Knoxville Fire Department leaves the state in training hours. With our training facility, we're dealing with a tower that's over half a century old. And other infrastructures and props are outdated. In closing, I urge you to deliver real resorts for our department, invest in the fire department, make your employees feel like they are a priority. These investments will not only boost morale, but they'll help with recruitment and retention. And it's also will enhance the safety and well-being of first responders and your citizens. I will close with this. For your, where your treasure is, your heart is also. Thanks.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak at public forum is Damian Felipe Jimenez. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record? I think the podium can go down a little bit. There's a button on the side. You got it, yeah. Digital native there.
Good evening. First off, I want to thank God for giving me the opportunity to be here today. I would also like to show my gratitude to everyone that is present here on this day, and to let you know that I value your time. And, and if you, and if you are here supporting our community, please be respectful, because this is a peaceful meeting, to stand in our solidarity with us. A thank you to every person that each, each and every day goes out to work and brings back their daily bread. I am a 12-year-old child that goes to school like any other kid. My favorite subject is science, and I love to eat pizza. I have cats that I love, but wish to someday have a platypus. I dream of becoming a scientist, or maybe even a chef to have my own restaurant. But maybe later on, I'll change my mind. But as, but as a kid, I have suffered racism, and so has my family and community, for being a kid, for be, for being immigrants, in a time where many kids have been separated from their parents inhumanly, leaving them with trauma for life. This is something that shouldn't be happening to us while being children, as kids. People think that what we see, hear, or feel doesn't affect us, but in fact, it does. At school, they tell us that we are the future of this country. They tell us to fight for our dreams and to be someone someday. But how will we even do this if hatred is being taught, teaching us to hate each other and to tear each other apart? They tell us to, to what hap, what's happening. But how can we pretend that nothing is going on? How can we just sit still and watch? And I just want to add this small reflection. Love your neighbor as yourself. What does this mean? It means respect, dignity, empathy, compassion, generosity, forgiveness, and to not judge or condemn. Thank you, may God be with us.
Thank you, Damian. Very well spoken. Next person signed up to speak is William Mendoza. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record?
My name is William Mendoza, 2442 Brown Avenue, Knoxville, Tennessee. Firstly, thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak here, and thank you, City Council. Good afternoon, good after, oh, night? So, most of y'all know me, and most of y'all know my background, and I am a proud Hispanic and a proud first-generation American. I stand before you today, not just as a speaker, but as someone who knows firsthand that immigrant, immigration is not just a policy issue, it's a human story. It's a story of parents seeking a better life for their children. It's a story for students dreaming of college and careers. It's a story of workers building our cities, feeding our communities, and caring of our loved ones. It's my story. It's the story of America. But let me be honest, from the start, I'm not here to demand anything from you. I understand that City Council has not a lot of power in immigration issues, it's a lot of federal stuff. I'm not gonna ask you for something that you can't give us, which I completely understand. I think I've been here many City Councils, so I think I, I can know what powers and what powers you don't have. But I am here to share the truth and stuff that is happening in my community, and what's actually really happening. The truth is that too many families live in fear of separation, too many students walk into classroom each day wondering if country, if the country that they still call home will be able to call it home tomorrow. Too many immigrants are treated as less-than-human simply because of where they were born or what papers they carry. Immigrants contribute every single day to heart, to the heartbeat of this country. We are workers, caretakers, classmates, dreamers. We are people who love this country and want not more than just being accepted. I still believe in an America where no one is judged by where they were from, but who they are and what they wanna do for their community. I always joke around with my friends that I'm probably the most American person they know, because I am extremely proud of being American. I'm the first person in my entire family to be born here, that's in my mom's side and my dad's side, and I am the embodiment of my parents' American dream. But I never thought that I would reach to a point where I'll feel like the need to carry my passport everywhere I go, just in case I need to prove if I'm an American, if I stops me. I know someone who was deported and separated from her, from her four children. A 13-year-old, a 10-year-old, and a 5-year-old, and a little girl who just turned 4 last Thursday. And it breaks my heart to see them say, "I love you," and I miss you to their mother through a screen. This is happening to families across this nation. I'm not just telling you this for you to feel guilty, I'm telling you because people need to understand what we're happening. Because when people understand, hearts can change, and when hearts can change, eventually laws do too. So let this speech be a seed, not a demand, but just a story. A story you carry with you, a story you might tell someone else, a story that reminds you, that reminds us that change begins with awareness. Immigration is not about them, but it's about all of us. It's about what country we want to be. I believe in, in the American dream. I believe that it should be for all of us. For me, I remember when I was little, telling my parents that I really, really wish I was 18 so I'm able to vote. Since I was little, I've always been proud of being born, and specifically born in East Tennessee. I love this country, I love this state, I love this city. This is where I grew up, and this is where I'm gonna die, and I tell everyone that. My bodies will be buried here. I love Knoxville so much. But it saddens me what is happening with my community. I am a notary public, and I do- I am a notary public, and I do currently, a lot of work that I'm doing right now is notarizing documents of where their parents are, where their kid's gonna go if they get deported. Seeing my community, as I say, I'm a pastor's son, seeing many of my community members and my church members being scared and asking me, "Joed," they call me by my middle name, "what are we gonna do? How can you help me?" Getting calls at 3:00 in the morning, "Hey, my cousin got in jail, what can we do?" So this is something that is close to me. And again, I'm not here demanding anything because I understand that there's stuff that City Council can't do. But just knowing what is actually happening, that is not only happening in Los Angeles, it's not only happening in New York, it's not only happening in Nashville, these are stuff that is happening here in Knoxville. And it starts with awareness, and it's just a story. Thank you for listening, and that's all I ask.
The next person, Councilmember Parker, did you?
Well, just a question. I believe we have more speakers signed up than our rules allow for.
There are a total of 10 people signed up, and the rules generally allow...
There's another page.
Oh, there's another page.
Two pages.
Oh. Okay, let me see. Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Total of 17 people signed up. I'm not sure if they're all still here.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Johnson, would you mind calling out the names and maybe have folks raise their hands to see who's still here? It's a little late, so half of these people may have gone. Can we just get an assessment of how many people are here?
I can call them out.
Is that okay?
I'll call out the list and if you want to let us know if you're present.
Yeah, would you please raise your hand if she calls out?
Michelle Ivester? Is she present? She's here? Tom Bus, Tim Bus? Okay. Paul DeLeon? Emma Cosigwa? Stuart Hall? Lindsay Juremko? She's not here? Justin Chavez? Is Justin Chavez here? Anybody seeing him? Okay, that's... Michael O'Malley? Sean Bryant? Did he leave? Enzinga Amani? Lisa McLeod? Is Lisa McLeod here?
No.
Nope. Okay, Lee Garcia? Lee Garcia? Not here. Claudia Caballero? Cynthia Finch? I think she sent us a note she couldn't be here, so...
She was here.
Oh, she is here?
She was.
She's not here.
She was here.
I think she had to go. So we've had three, and that would mean one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight additional people still here who've signed up.
So minus three more is five extra, is that what I meant? We got three more speakers in accordance with our rule?
Yes.
Okay.
So just a quick point of order.
Go for it.
I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, you have the floor.
Thank you. And it may be similar to what was just about to be proposed, but acknowledging that we have a room of individuals who've come to speak to us tonight, and our rules allow or limit public forum speakers to six, I was gonna make a motion that we suspend our rules to allow for the remaining speakers and put a limit on the remaining speakers of three minutes each.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Okay. Look at us. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay? And it's not debatable? So the motion on the floor is to change the rules to allow for the rest of the speakers to speak, but the timeline would go from five minutes to three minutes? Okay? Anybody, any... Does everyone understand what they're voting on? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We'll go on and call people in the order in which they signed up. Remember now, you just have three minutes, please.
Are you ready to do a three-minute clock?
Okay. Michelle Ivester, you're next.
My name is Michelle Ivester. I live on Chickamauga Avenue, Oakwood-Lincoln Park, an extremely diverse and eclectic neighborhood that I love. I've lived in Knoxville for almost 40 years. I, like many others, chose to make Knoxville my home. First and foremost, I am an ally. Tonight, I want to begin by acknowledging the Cherokee Nation as well as other local Native American tribes and their ancestral homelands that surround us. I want to recognize among us those who are the descendants of immigrants, the great-grandchildren, the grandchildren, the children of immigrants, those who are descendants of African slaves, and those among us who are immigrants, to say, "We welcome you. You have a home here among us." Our city leaders should also make you welcome by helping ensure that our enforcement agencies are adhering to the rights all of us are individually guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States, guaranteed by the Fourth Amendment against unreasonable search and seizure, which means, among other things, that without a judicial warrant, people cannot be taken from their homes. That process must be lawful and transparent. We hope our leaders will commit to upholding the lawful process that protects each and every one of us from being taken from our families without due process. That protects our children from being separated from their parents, protects individuals from being disappeared into domestic and foreign prisons, protects us from self-appointed mercenaries who harass and threaten anyone who speaks or looks differently from them. We've witnessed terrifying roundups in other cities, recently in LA and sadly as close as Nashville. Unfortunately, we've also had that happen in our neighborhood. Ones where neighbors have been taken from their, excuse me, homes and their jobs, should put a cough drop in, sorry, ripped from their families, separated from their children. These roundups have been aggressive and violent. Do we want to be a community that tolerates these tactics? We are asking our city leaders to go on record, to uphold due process, to encourage local law enforcement agencies and individuals working as such to adhere to our civil liberties and our fundamental rights given to us by the Constitution. We ask in short that you reject the hatred creeping into our city and affirm Knoxville is a welcoming and safe community, one where we value the contributions each and every one of us make, where we acknowledge the historical contributions immigrants to the United States have made and welcome the ones incoming immigrants will make. I'll close by reminding everyone that our great nation was literally built by immigrants, which has helped to make the US the wonderful country it is, or perhaps now I should say was. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Tim Bus. Mr. Bus, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Three minutes.
Oh, three, yeah, three, sorry.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Timothy Bus. I live at 1920 Hokataki Lane. Been pleased and proud to call it home for 23 years. First, I want to say that I am aware that, you know, the city of Knoxville is not actively participating and cooperating with ICE, and I want to thank you guys and Chief Noel for that. I appreciate that. In the 20...
We're handing people over to the monsters who are doing it.
Hey, hey, please let the speaker speak. Please, please. Mr., your green shirt, you're out of order. Please be quiet. Okay, we'll restart the...
Okay. So apparently, that may be somewhat debatable, but anyway, that's the information that I had from a trusted source. But I hope that's not true what the gentleman said. All right, so in 23 years I've lived here, I've met hundreds of immigrants from every corner of the globe, most from Latin America, but also from South America, Africa, Europe, the former Soviet Union, Ukraine, and the Middle East. As a group, they're some of the hardest-working and best people that I know, okay? And I believe that they enrich our community beyond measure. In addition to the adults I've met, I've worked in the public schools for the last two and a half years as a substitute and a full-time teacher. I've been in 15 different schools, middle, elementary, high schools, and I've actually been in classes at every level through K through 12. In this capacity, I've met literally thousands of students, a couple of hundred who come from immigrant families. When I think about my immigrant students that come from immigrant families that have no legal status or maybe a mixed legal status, I feel a mixture of sadness and anger that they may be split apart if the current demonization of immigrants continues to escalate. These young people are caught in a situation they didn't create, and my heart goes out to them and their families. My earnest request to you this evening is to help the immigrant community to mitigate the damage that's being done by these inhumane operations. I'm not asking you to break the law, but I did hear some comments about some ways, the Legal Defense Fund. I'm sure there are other ways that the city could help our immigrant friends and neighbors. They deserve, they're frightened, and they deserve our understanding and our support. Please engage with us and them to see what can be done to help within the bounds of the law. Thank you.
Next person is Paul DeLeon. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
I'm Paul DeLeon, 630 Watauga Avenue. I'm a retired schoolteacher. I come to ask you to stand up for our immigrant neighbors and for the whole community. In 1838, another president, trampling on laws and treaties, tore thousands of Cherokee and other peoples from their homes and sent them on the trail of tears. Many died on the way. The mass deportations today repeat this crime on a vaster scale. I used to think of ethnic cleansing as something that takes place in countries run by dictators like Iraq, Myanmar, Sudan, Nazi Germany. I think of the warlords who sent, of the Bible, who deported Jews to Babylon, and the merchants who sold millions of Africans into slavery. Let us not be misled, the president is not focused on deporting criminals to keep us safe. That's a total lie. More than 90% of the immigrants held in Knox jails are there solely because of immigration violations, not because of any harm done to our community. And while ICE carries out indiscriminate mass arrests, our president welcomes white South Africans like Elon Musk. So we know their motives, and they have nothing to do with keeping us safe. Quite the contrary, according to the conservative Cato Institute, the level of border police spending is already so extreme that it has swapped nearly all other criminal law enforcement priorities. And that's before this new budget bill. Let's not kid ourselves, we are not sending these folks back home. This is their home, Knoxville, Tennessee. Many have been here 10 or 20 years, graduated high school, raised families, bought homes, built businesses, established churches. And please, let us not shrug our shoulders saying, "That's the law." Slavery, segregation, and Jim Crow were systems of law too, vicious and unjust, and part of a bigger lawlessness. We are all beneficiaries of those who fought and sometimes died to overturn these cruel systems. I can understand why you all might hesitate. The authoritarians are taking aim at you too. Do you think it's right that the state has criminalized public officials who vote their consciences? That the president jails judges who challenge his lawlessness? Do you think this is how democracy is supposed to operate? And do you think that if we Angloes just hunker down, keep our heads down as the storm sweeps away millions of our neighbors, that sometime, somehow, democracy will magically reemerge? We know from history that racism is always, always, the leading edge of authoritarian attack on all democratic institutions. I'm an old guy, I never expected to see white supremacists back in power and a desperate fight for democracy itself. We don't always get to choose our battles. We count on you to stand up for our community, for all of us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Emma Cosigwa. Ms. Cosigwa, if you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
I'm short. Good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Elis Cosigwa. I live at 201 East Columbia Avenue. I am here today to, first of all, to thank everyone who is present, because you're here to support us, to support the immigrant community. And I thank all of you, Mayor Cannon and City Council, for listening, you know. But the reason why we chose to come here tonight is because when we have a problem personally, we usually go to a person that we trust. We go to a family member, we go to a friend, we go to our leaders or our elders. And we started with City Council because we know many of you and we trust you. I know many of you by first name, and I know that you don't have the power to change what is going on with the immigrant community right now, and this is all immigrant communities, but you sit in the same room as other people who do have some power. And you can probably influence them in some way to think about the families, the children that are afraid. We are living in fear these days. I hear stories that make me so sad, and lately, I've cried a lot. Many, some of you know me, and then I'm always saying something and I cry because it's really painful to hear that families are being, you know, there is a family that someone threw a can of beans at them and told them that they should go back to their country, and this was a mother and two children. And then there are other horrible things. It's really scary to see what's happening in Nashville, in California. This was something that I read about in a book. So we ask you to, you know, just, let's figure out something together. Let's not break the law, but let's think about the children that are affected by this and the families that are afraid. We love Knoxville, Tennessee. This is my home. This is our home. And let's just come up with a solution together. Thank you.
The next person is Stuart Hall.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Hall. I live at 1120 Durham Road. Excuse me, I'm losing my phone. One of the positions I hold in this community and that many of you know me through is as Chair of the Knox County Democratic Party. It is a position that in a lot of ways means nothing at all. It also is a position that gives me a platform to speak out against injustice and offer support in troubling times. Every single one of us can see that ICE and the Trump administration are operating in ways that are dangerous, unconstitutional, often unlawful, and certainly anti-American. Their actions are making our community less safe. Those of us here tonight understand that you have limited options. And because of that, I know there's a lot of uncertainty about how you, as individuals and elected officials, can stand up to this threat. All I'm here to ask tonight is that you be strong and outspoken about this issue in favor of these communities. In the coming weeks and months, as pathways for action become clearer, I ask that you use the options that you do have at your disposal at that point and support these communities. We will be behind you in this. I want to make one thing clear: We are advocating for all people in the United States to get their constitutional right to due process. When one person's rights are trampled, when an immigrant's rights are trampled, our rights are trampled. Everyone is at risk. I hope that the speakers tonight have been able to show you that your community is behind you on this issue during these uncertain weeks and months. We all have a lot of work to do together to get through this. In one year, five years, 10 years... In one year, five years, 10 years, when we do get through this, and we will, we will look back at these moments and judge our own actions. Let us all be proud of our future selves. Or let us all make our future selves proud. Thank you, everybody.
Next speaker is Michael O'Malley. Mr. O'Malley, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
Michael O'Malley, 2744 Woodbine Avenue. I'm here, same as everybody else, to ask you guys as a city council to prepare to protect immigrants in Knoxville. So as we know, cities like Nashville have been the theater for sweeping actions against immigrant communities and while we've not seen such ostentatious shows to force here yet, we may one day, and even if we don't, that doesn't change the fact that immigration enforcement is already here in Knoxville and has been for years, seizing our neighbors and leaving fear in devastated families in their wake. And it's high time that the city of Knoxville takes seriously the fact that this injustice is occurring, not just in Bean Station, not just in Nashville, not just in unincorporated Knox County, but in the city proper. I understand the city's legal recourse for outright opposing federal agencies such as ICE is pretty limited and I appreciate that, for example, American Cannon has made clear statements against the collaboration of local law enforcement with ICE in programs in the past, and that's wonderful, but I think it must be said that Knoxville is also a collaborator in this. Sometimes this is just merely by proxy, such as the frequent occasions that KPD and ICE deputized KCSO share the same public space at meetings, festivals, schools, and city streets. Other collaborations are deeper. For example, KPD uses the sheriff's jail and all KPD arrests are subject to the same carceral ICE enforcement as those brought by KCSO. As another example, Knoxville has vastly expanded KPD's surveillance capabilities with the creation of its real-time information center, the installation of public surveillance cameras, and the adoption of the Axon software to centralize all video footage. Knoxvilleians are watched and identified by law enforcement more than ever and that footage and those identities are subject to ICE requests. Furthermore, Tennessee now requires by law that all local law enforcement agencies share with ICE the immigration status of people officers interact with. Our city is intricately intertwined with the immigration enforcement apparatus, whether we want to be or not. And it takes, it's going to take real creative thinking by the city and its legal council to determine how best to begin the process of disentanglement, where that's even possible. And what I'm asking for tonight is that the council begins that creative thinking now. I don't have a lot of specific answers, but I do know that if we intend to keep our immigrant community safe, we need to have a united front against their oppression in whatever ways are possible. Nashville, for example, has required metro departments to report all communications with ICE, as well as demanded that ICE release the names of all detained people, and these things at least increase the transparency of enforcement activity and perhaps Knoxville could explore these options as a starting point, but obviously that can't be the end. Whatever the case, it can't just be Nashville taking steps to protect immigrants from ICE and as long as it is, these steps will be dismissed as grandstanding liberal anomaly and Nashville will be the target of retribution by our state and federal authorities. As many cities as possible need to join Nashville in prioritizing their immigrant communities, if nothing else, to show the fascists that this is not simply a liberal cause or a Nashville cause, it's a Tennessee cause and a human cause. Thank you.
Nzinga Amani, 1312 Hawthorne Avenue. There's not much more to say than what's been said already. I think this is one of those moments, one of those moments for everyone. I think everyone, most of the people behind me already made the decision, but this is a moment where you got to make a decision. What side are you on? That is not a light, a light decision. I understand the power that you all don't have, but when you make a decision to say, "I am going to resist the oppression, the fascist policies of this Trump administration and I'm going to stick up for immigrant families," right? Once you make that decision, it's not about what power you don't have, it's about what options do you have, right? And I love all these ideas that's come up, right? And it is going to take some creative thinking, but first and foremost, what side are you on? Chief Noel of KPD, that's not a woo moment. Chief Noel of KPD, what side are you on? What side are your officers on? Are we needlessly putting people in jail over petty crimes so they can get booked up by ICE or are we finding ways to let folks go with a warning, giving citations, right? All this surveillance equipment that was brought up, are we just going to let law enforcement run wild with it, right? Are we going to let the risk of ICE getting hold of that footage damage more lives or are we going to make a decision, make a choice and choose a side? Is that we're not going to give this information away to people who want to use it for bad intentions? And I know this is hard to be called out, chief, but KPD has caused a lot of harm. While 287G is not a program that Knoxville specific, Knoxville City Government specifically endorses, right, it is in the county, it is our jail, right? So we need to be looking for ways to reduce the harm, reduce the impact. So it's time to make a decision. What side are you on? Are you on the side of the fascists or are you on the side of the families? I hope you all choose right.
The next speaker and the final one on this list for this evening is Claudia Caballero.
Buenas noches, everyone. Thank you so much, members of City Council, staff, and everyone else who stayed late and those who are watching. I've been getting texts all evening. My name is Claudia Caballero. I'm at 3101 Foster Lane. I'm representing Centro Hispano and really backing some of the data and some of the stories that people have already spoken about today. I'm here representing folks who are scared to be here tonight and we're hoping that we can share some of the concerns that we hear every single day. So across the city, Latino families are living in fear. We've already heard this. Parents are terrified of being separated from their children. Kids are missing school. Teenagers nearing graduation are feeling hopeless because they're not sure if they can go to post-secondary options and if they are, they're scared if their families give their information and if they're at mixed status, what will happen to someone in their family? There are really no clear answers at this moment. There are laws and then we're like, "We can't tell you what's going to happen a month from now, a week from now, tomorrow." Even those with legal status feel unsafe, targeted, and simply, for simply speaking Spanish or being Latino. Since January, calls pleading for help have come, have more than doubled. We saw about 750 referrals in 2024. Just now, in, since January to now in June, we have seen over 1,600 fielded calls and services that people are needing help for. That's from 750 to 1,600. One is 20, it's 12 months, the other is six months, so you can get an idea of the volume that we're, we're looking at. Families are reaching out in crisis. Legal questions especially about immigration have surged. There is no legal pathway to citizenship for so many families at this point and there's really nothing we can tell them, right, in terms of services they can have. 41% of all those legal questions are immigration right now. We are feeling, we're not just fielding questions, but also loads and loads of misinformation. We're also seeing severe mental health crises in families, especially among low-income Latina mothers. We're seeing housing instability on the rise, but also such decreases in rental assistance in the last, from county and cities port and coming from, from other places. It's dried up and we know that from housing across the community. I'm looking at my time here. People are increasingly afraid to apply for basic programs, SNAP, WIC, and Ten Care when they have the right to do so. They are delaying doctors' visits, skipping preventive healthcare, and also not going for medical attention because they're scared. This is further burdening our healthcare system because of fear. Let's not forget the economic cost. Workers, the breadwinners at homes are terrified to go to work. They're terrified that they won't be coming home or not being able to pick up their children from school. Entire households are at risk. It's truly a domino effect. These are our neighbors, these are part of the fabric of Knoxville. Centro is doing its best to increase services and programming and knowing information that people can have. What we're asking for today is truly figuring out ways that we can keep our community safe. We've heard enough stories here to just give a taste of this. This is every single day in our offices and it is truly a time of fear and I'm hoping that we can have solutions here to support the community. Thank you for listening to us and for giving us opportunity.
Councilmembers, that concludes public forum and without objection, this meeting is adjourned.